Good evening.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting, May 21st, 2018. I'm calling the meeting to order. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Teeter. Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman.
Present.
Councilmember Elliott. Councilmember Guardiola.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, everyone is here tonight except for Councilwoman Elliott. I'm open for a motion to excuse her from tonight's meeting. Mr. Douglas?
So moved.
Mr. Hughesman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I want to bring up, I had a citizen request to amend the agenda to move citizen communication from where it is currently on our agenda, which is at eight o'clock, based on the estimations, to directly after the presentation we're about to hear. Few concerns with that, of course, one, if we move it, we're going to give more people opportunity to speak. If we don't, if we do move it, those who have read the agenda and that will show up, may show up after citizen communication will deny them the opportunity. But I'm leaving it up to the council as to whether or not you want to amend the agenda. And now would be the time to make a motion if you so desire to move the agenda. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, I would like to leave the agenda as posted.
Okay. Mr. Douglas?
I would like to amend the agenda and move up citizens' communications.
Alright, so I have a motion to amend the agenda by Mr. Douglas. Is there a second? Mr. Hughesman?
I'll second. Councilman Douglas says a motion to move the citizen communication.
Alright, before we vote on that, I'd like to make a caveat that we don't just move it. If the council decides to move the citizen communication to right after the presentation, then I want to also keep citizen communication where it's at in the agenda for people that are going to show up later in the meeting. And we'll end up having two citizen communications so that we don't deny folks that have prepared based on the agenda, the way it's written. Alright, alright, I will ask a voice vote, all in favor of amending the agenda and putting a second citizen communication after the presentation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Alright, so... The nays. One to Mr. Teeter, Mr. Guardiola, and so it's a two, three to seven or whatever, three to, one, two, three, four, three to five? Three to five. So motion fails. Citizen communication will be on the agenda at the, at the time it is currently scheduled on the agenda. So moving forward in our meeting, we have the presentation on oil and gas from our staff, and I would ask Mr. McBroom to start that off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to provide just a very brief introduction and then turn the presentation over to Community Development Director Chris Kramer. On the agenda tonight, right after this presentation, is an executive session to receive some legal advice on oil and gas matters and for city council to potentially provide instructions to city staff as your negotiators on oil and gas matters in the city. There is no specific action on the agenda tonight planned, but in light of the executive session, city staff thought it would be beneficial to provide an overview presentation of oil and gas activity and mostly on the regulatory process that surrounds oil and gas development within our community. The regulatory process at the state level and the regulatory process at the city's level. If you've had a chance to look at the presentation, we're not providing recommendations, we're not taking positions on issues, it's simply an overview of oil and gas activity and of the regulatory framework that we have to operate in. So with that, Chris Kramer's going to lead off the presentation, and then there's a portion of the presentation that'll be provided by City Attorney Robert Cheesely.
Good evening, Mr. Mayors, members of council. I think Mr. McBroom gave a very good overview of the purpose of tonight, but as you can see here, I'm just going to briefly hit the COGCC process and a little bit on the city's process, a review of what we've gotten notice of from the state, a little bit of information about our public information, and then obviously going into the executive session. So this may seem elementary, and I am going to go rather quickly, but just to make sure that we are all on the same page about what oil and gas is. Obviously, oil and natural gas is a non-renewable natural resource that is generally recovered from underground formations that go through a process whereby they are extracted, transported, treated, and refined for future use. How is this done? It's usually done through drilling, and different types of wells have existed over the years to do this type of drilling. Working from left to right in the graph, you can see the vertical drilling operation, that's a little bit more historic, that's what a lot of the wells have been over the years. It's sort of the straw going down into the drink and straight down. The surface area that's able to extract the resources is just the portion at the very bottom, right down in here. As time went on, more technology began to emerge whereby directional drilling could occur, which allowed for a little bit more flexibility at the surface. And then more recently, technological advancements have occurred that allow for the horizontal drilling. The reason this matters is that it gives a much greater surface area for the extraction. It also allows for the placement of those facilities to have a lot more flexibility. It also allows for more of those wells to be located on a single pad instead of being spread out throughout an area or community. You can see here a graphic that shows sort of a lot of these wells that go up into one little well pad site at the surface, going down and then going out, branching out from there, often going underneath other parcels or uses that are at the surface level. A vast majority of the activity at the COGCC is the horizontal well, multiple wellhead, horizontal drilled wells. The other technological advancement that has really allowed a lot of the recent activity in this part of the front range is the hydraulic fracturing. It's a technology that's actually been around a while, but it's obviously becoming more and more sophisticated over time. It's an essence whereby the operator will put, inject high-pressure combination of things like water and a proppant like sand, proppant to prop open the fractures that are occurred at such a high pressure. That fracturing allows for the pressure to push out any oil or natural gas that might exist and becomes more accessible in other ways than it wasn't before. Ninety percent of the oil and gas wells today are hydraulically fractured. I do provide a link here. The COGCC has quite a bit of information on their website about the process. The life cycle of a well, again, this, it's obviously far more involved than you could ever do on a single slide, but at a high level, a pre-development phase that occurs with leasing, some geologic testing, permitting, then it goes into a development phase, which is usually done in a matter of months. And that, the picture you see is actually of a rig that is, would be occurring during a development phase. The production phase is when it's just up and running, and with the old vertical wells, you might see those pump jacks around, that's when there's not enough pressure to push it up. With a lot of the wells now, they are just a single wellhead that is a lot less visible than some of those previous pump jacks. And obviously, the last phase is the plugging the wells and the reclaiming of the land around it. Regulating this process primarily in this state at a state level is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. It's a division of Department of Natural Resources. They do a, they have a whole series of rules at the state level that govern a whole variety of things. At the city level, we received notices of some of those, and the big ones that the city has received notice of so far, recently in the last three or four months, have been spacing applications, Form II, and Form IIAs. That sounds like Greek at this point, I will get into those a little bit more in just in a few minutes, but those are, I would say, the most common applications that we've received notice of from the state. The COGCC itself has a commission that are all appointed by the governor. You can see the nine current commissioners, they have requirements as to the makeup of that commission, they have representation requirements that so many must be represented from certain parts of the state, or the industry, or environmental groups, et cetera. I include makeup, sorry, links to both the profiles of each one of these members and the requirements for the makeup of the commission. The authority for the COGCC comes from, obviously, the state legislature, and it governs a lot of the range of activities associated with drilling, including the drilling, producing, and plugging of wells, the operation and the production of those, the spacing of those, which talks about where the mineral interests could be gathered from spaced, within a certain spacing unit. And they derive this through their state interests that talk about things like the efficient exploration of production of resources, the prevention of waste, protection of mineral owners' rights. These kinds of factors allow that state interest to take precedent in some cases over some of the things that might be regulated. And I know Mr. Cheesely is going to talk a little bit later about preemption and its relationship to our local regulations. They do have a, the COGCC has a local government-designee program whereby a specific person is notified of applications and is a point of contact. There's also additional responsibilities and opportunities to provide additional communication with the COGCC through this program. The city's been a member since 2011, and currently I am the actual local government-designee point person. These next three slides just are a high-level overview about what those most common processes are. The maps with each one of these are just by way of example, they are not intended to be an exhaustive list or show you a specific one to consider, it's just to give you a visual representation of what they're all about. The spacing application is really a large area application that looks at the boundaries of the subsurface activity. It is not contemplating a specific surface use. A surface use for the subsurface area may be within the spacing unit, it may be outside the spacing unit. The big process associated with this at the state is trying to understand the geographic area for the subsurface activity. The next one is the Form II. The Form II is the name of the actual application that the COGCC uses, and its primary function is to look at the wellbore, each individual wellbore that goes down below the surface and accesses various minerals and formations. I can tell you that each one of these blue lines represents a potential well, and you can see they are lines on a map because of that horizontal drilling that I mentioned earlier. These Form II's do not represent permission, it's yet another step in a multi-step process that the state uses. The surface location is really governed through the COGCC Form II-A, and that's what looks at the truck routes, the location, if there's tanks, if there's, what types of environmental issues would be addressed, any kind of best management practices that might be considered, whether that's landscaping, immigrate, sorry, emission reduction, stormwater management, fencing, emergency management that might be needed for the site depending on the location and the context. This map just is, again, this is just by way of example, this just shows you, this is Denver International Airport here to the lower right, this is the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. Some of these blue applications are for well, for II's, Form II's that are in process right now at the state. This just shows to the extent in this basin to the north, the level of activity that is occurring in this part of the state as a result of a lot of those technological advances that I mentioned earlier. So the city, I want to say three and a half months ago, the city had received notice of no applications at the state, and there were also no applications to the city. And in the span of three and a half months, it has dramatically changed. You can see we have a number of spacing applications, mostly from extraction, oil and gas, there is one from petro-operating, and we'll, I'll show you some locations here in just a minute. The Form II's, so you can see, by the way, the site names, Blue Jay, Owl, Condor, all those are site names that the operator gives to these sites that the COGCC uses as a way to identify them. That's not a name that city staff came up with. But each one of these lines, there's actually an individual application for 32 different Form II's within Blue Jay, and there's 16 Form II's for Owl. And we'll talk about the comments and the deadlines here in just a moment. The one that obviously has the most impact at a surface level is the II-A, and there are four of those currently that have been submitted. I do want to note that through conversations with extraction and the COGCC, at the city's request, extraction has asked the COGCC to not issue a decision after this comment deadline and instead provide a second comment deadline. The primary purpose for this is, because again, as I mentioned, we went from zero activity to over 100 Form II's, about 10 spacing applications, four Form II applications in a really short time period, and so that we can take a more comprehensive approach in understanding and providing thoughtful comments that will accomplish the goals that council wants to accomplish, we've requested a secondary comment period so that we can continue to formulate those comments. This is a map showing all the pending applications. Just, again, here's the arsenal at the bottom, Denver International Airport, to the east, I-76, US-85. From this line over, these are all extraction spacing applications that are in, you can see the different colors indicating the geographic area that the spacing application is for. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, applications for extraction. The antelope area is the petro spacing application that's been submitted. In addition to that, you can see the different pads that have a Form II and sometimes Form II-A associated with them with the green dots. So again, if we were to pull this map up three and a half, four months ago, it would just show streets and the arsenal and the wildlife refuge. It obviously shows a great deal of activity now. From a Commerce City perspective, you know, it should be noted, and I say that here in a minute, no oil and gas permits have been submitted to the city. Everything I'm describing is what the city would require, and nothing has been submitted yet for this. So if and when we get to this stage with any one of these operators, they have a requirement to submit an oil and gas permit that we control through our zoning authority and police powers. And you can see here the list of those sources of authority that come from the state and our Home Rule Charter and the Constitution. The Land Development Code specifically talks about the ability for the city council to regulate this, to ensure the health, safety, and general welfare concerns that the city may have. The city permitting process, in short, some council members may remember, we updated that in 2012. And the overall approach, I won't go through this and read this line by line, I will just give you the overall approach, is to provide a administrative review approval of an oil and gas permit where, the conditions of which are outlined in the Land Development Code. And many of those requirements are very similar to the COGCC requirements. There is also a negotiated extraction agreement that has, gives us the opportunity to ask for additional requirements, to negotiate additional requirements that an operator could theoretically agree to after negotiated process. There are some prohibitions that are listed in that, in the city's base regulations that you can see there. Again, as I mentioned though, despite the flurry of activity at the state, no operator has submitted an oil and gas permit application to the city. At this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Cheesely for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. If you could plug in the USB for the clicker. I wanted to speak briefly on some of the legal interests related to oil and gas development and the regulatory authorities that are split in Colorado between the state of Colorado pursuant to rules set by the legislature and enacted by the commission, and what's left to local governments to do. I want to note that the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is the state entity, as Mr. Kramer mentioned, which is different from the Colorado Oil and Gas Association.
One second, Robert.
Sure.
Can everybody in the back here? Alright, good. I just want to make sure everybody can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Which is also known as COGA, which is an industry group, which is sponsored by industry members. And so when we use acronym, COGCC is the state regulatory body that controls these permits largely. There is an area of law in Colorado called preemption, where you have two different bodies of authority with the power to regulate something. Since 1992, in Colorado, oil and gas regulation and development of mineral resources has been designated as an area of mixed state and local concern, meaning both the state and local governments like Commerce City can regulate it. However, where local regulations conflict with state law, those local regulations have to give way to what the state regulates. That concept is known as preemption, and generally the concept is if it materially impedes or destroys a state interest, or forbids what the state law allows, or allows what the state law forbids. In summary, that is where local governments are prohibited from regulating. That has been around for many decades and has been seen, cases cited up there. An outright drilling ban by the city of Greeley was found to be preempted in 1992. A ban on hydraulic fracturing was found to be preempted in 2016 by the city of Longmont, and in the same day, Fort Collins' five-year moratorium to study hydraulic fracturing was found to be preempted and not permitted. Recently, as recently as a few weeks ago, Adams County District Court invalidated a number of regulations enacted by the city of Thornton in 2017 that sought to regulate within the gray area left open by some of those cases, where Thornton attempted to establish standards for setbacks, pipelines, well consolidation, putting multiple wells onto as few sites as possible, and then certain administrative procedures. It also addressed flow line regulations and insurance requirements that were implemented by the city. In this April decision, from a court that Commerce City would also be subject to, if a legal challenge was brought, those were found to be conflicting with the COGCC's regulations because they address, through their exhaustive regulations, those same matters. And so that city was found to have attempted to do more than the state did, and therefore was in conflict. The COGA, which is the industry association there, brought that suit and is now challenging the insurance and flow line regulations as a secondary part of that suit. That is subject to appeal at some point, it is not known at this point whether that will be appealed. Recently, this legislative session that just closed a few weeks ago, there were a number of bills pending, that most of those did not make it out of the legislature with the exception of this Senate Bill 18230, which modified forced pooling laws that allowed multiple wells, modified cost recovery from non-consenting owners, and requiring more information on lease officers before a hearing on pooling, essentially increasing the rights of mineral owners there. From the commission, from the state regulatory body's perspective, this year they approved two new sets of rules, one relating to flow line regulations, and another about a mill levy related to oil and gas conservation. So that's a brief update on some recent state legislative and regulatory action. The remainder of legal impacts would be discussed in the executive session. As we close out this presentation, I wanted to highlight for the council and for the public the website that staff has put together and keeps updated on the city's website, C3gov.com. If you search for oil and gas, you'll pull up this website, which has a substantial amount of information, has been updated recently with more information, and is a work of continuous improvement. On it, you will find our regulations, and then an updated list of activity at the COGCC, those state applications, and where you can find more information on those, including comment deadlines. So please refer to that as one of the primary ways that we can communicate to the public what the city is aware of that's going on in the city from an oil and gas perspective. And then finally, as we indicated at the last city council meeting, the third Monday of each month, which is the second regular meeting, the staff is going to provide an update highlighting newer recent activity, either state or city submittals when they're received, with a brief presentation like this. That will be provided as part of the city manager update towards the end of every meeting. But we don't have to wait until the third Monday because we understand the city manager and I are committed to making sure that relevant information is provided as soon as possible. and I are committed to making sure that relevant information is provided as soon as possible, so that can be updated on the website and provided to council for reference. At that point, we could answer any questions, but there are substantial related items for the executive session as to how the city would respond to COGCC activity and to discuss a few legal items.
Thank you. Is there any questions of the staff from council at this time? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. You know, in this, in this presentation from COGA, it doesn't have anything related to the Martinez case, when that was entered, as far as what the law was based in our timeline.
I would like to, may I just note, this is a presentation developed by staff for the use of the public. The COGA, the Colorado Oil and Gas Association, did not have input on this presentation.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear.
All right.
Correct. The Martinez decision, which is pending, I did not determine to be a, a recent activity enough that was a last year item, as I mentioned, the last council meeting. That is something that is currently pending before the Colorado Supreme Court, and there is an opportunity for the council to join as an amicus if they decided, as I briefed to council in a confidential memorandum.
Okay. The other question I have is, since this is on the agenda as a presentation, and we have always told our citizens, if there's something on the, on the agenda, and they want to speak on it, at the time that this is on the agenda, they have opportunity to speak on this. I know this is presentation information for us, but it is, it is on the agenda, and I think we should, people, let the citizens who are here to speak on this, people come up and ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Yes, typically, where there are items on the council agenda, I believe council policies provide that action items, like resolutions or ordinances, or public hearings, will have opportunities for public comment. Otherwise, discussion of the business and public affairs of the city is confined to the citizen communication portion of the meeting.
But my question is, things that we need to hear are going to be after our executive session. And I think it's very important that we hear some of these, hear what citizens have to say, because it's pertinent to us on this. I mean, I think we did this, we didn't do this right, so I was putting it on the agenda. We think we should have an executive session last and not put it the way it, it's listed. I think we're doing ourselves, we're not doing our citizens justice.
Just a couple of quick points of clarification. Again, there is no city council action planned tonight, although some city council action is always possible. And secondly, there was some city council discussion of shifting citizen communication around on the agenda just earlier this evening, but city council elected not to do that.
Well, is there any way we can have this executive session after citizen communication?
That's certainly not a staff decision. The agenda is at the discretion of the city council.
Well, I want to ask council if we could move the executive session to the after citizen, after citizen's communication.
That's a motion, Mr. Douglas?
It's a motion.
I have a motion to move citizen, uh, citizen communication till when?
I mean, the, the executive session.
You want to move the executive session?
After the...
After citizen communication. All right, I have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Mr. Diaz?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to move the executive session till after, which would be putting it just after eight o'clock, on the agenda for the executive session, correct?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, I need to know who was the naysayers. All right, motion carries. We'll move the agenda around so that the executive session is after citizen communication. And now we'll move on into our agenda, and we'll do the executive session later in the meeting, due to the desire of council. All right. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If I could get everybody to stand for a moment of silence, please keep in your prayers the family of Aurora Mayor Steve Hogan, who passed away a little over a week ago.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the staff will please pass around the microphone for a citizen introduction.
My name is Glenn Baldenow.
Brandon Baldenow.
Jane Baldenow.
Mindy Imstal.
Darren Cooper.
Sharon Chung.
Teresa Eskridge.
Dominic Martinelli, city planner.
Matt Hader, Matt Hader, deputy city attorney.
Matt Suro, special counsel.
Dan Leftwich, an attorney from Boulder.
Philip Doe, environmental director for Be the Change.
Barbara Mills, Bria President, Be the Change.
Carly Seller, Commerce City.
Amaya Tunstall.
Wendy Orin.
Ken Hightower.
Elizabeth Hightower.
Elizabeth Cortez, McGee Decker.
Suzanne Minzer, McGee Decker.
Lacey Knowles, DA Davidson.
Danette Barrett.
Steve Struck.
Stella Struck.
Stacy Lockets.
Wes Fried Nash.
Margaret Anderson.
Charles Anderson.
Ryan Seadstrom, Colorado Oil and Gas Association.
Jason Trujillo.
Kelly Trujillo.
Chris Bagley.
Claudia Myers.
Don Myers.
Zora Sylvie.
Hazel Gray Sylvie.
Stephanie Sylvie.
Tamara Graff.
Perry Sylvie.
Amber Smith.
Ron Woodfin.
Brandy Nichols.
Domingo Moreno.
Derek Seifert.
Renee Charles.
Serena.
Glenn Murray, Murray Farms.
Susan Good.
Susan Noble.
Phil Noble.
Sean Cuevo.
Megan Cuevo.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Maria Zubia.
Salo Socero.
Yasmina Rojas.
Isabella Velasco.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment. Given that we've shifted the agenda around, some folks that were here to be recognized may not be here yet, so if you introduce them and they're not here, we might want to ask for them again a little bit later in the evening, so we don't miss them.
Sure. All right, we'll move into proclamations and recognitions. So I need to ask, are the Daniels Fund scholarshipship recipients here tonight? Not yet.
One option, Mr. Mayor, if folks aren't here yet, would be to skip those that aren't here, do citizen communication, and then come back to these items.
I would agree, based on timing. All right. So no on the Daniels Fund Scholarship, folks? Michelle? Not yet? Okay. No, there's some here, but I don't think all of them are here yet. How about the GFOA Award recognition? Are we prepared for that?
I think Ms. Carstens is here.
All right, I'll invite staff forward. So the Government Finance Officers Association Disguised Budget Presentation Award. This is the second year the city is a recipient of the award, correct?
That's correct.
Is there anything that staff wants to say about it, before I get my piece in?
No, I just want council to know that we take applying for that award very seriously. It's an opportunity for us to continue to improve our processes. After we apply for the award, we always get a response back from GFOA, not only to tell us whether or not we qualified and will be a recipient of the award, but they also provide additional comments each year of ways we can continue to improve the budget, and we try to take those and implement any changes they recommend in the next document, so it helps us continue to provide the best, most transparent information that we can.
And from the council, that's what we expect, and we appreciate all the effort that our staff puts into the transparency and the effort into making sure that our books are kept correctly, so that we can make sure our residents know exactly what happens with that money and what doesn't happen with that money. So does anybody else have anything they'd like to say concerning the GFOA award? Saying none? Mr. Douglas, did you have something?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys getting this award, second, second year of receiving this award. I'm in accounts for six years, and you guys have done a great job of providing that transparency. The budget is prepared great, you can go line by line, and if there's any questions I have had, you guys have answered all those, so I do appreciate that. The citizens can, can, can we request a copy to, to look at it? I mean, I think you guys provide a great service, and it shows, so thank you.
Thank you. Not only can they request a copy, but each year do, we do place that on the city's website as well, so it is available to, to them different ways.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, if the council will join me down front, please.
We'll be just starting the executive session.
We got the Public Works folks here? Good. I'd like to invite the Public Works staff forward. Nobody's coming forward, Brian. Where's the Public Works? Not here yet? Seven o'clock. Seven o'clock is when it's scheduled.
Apparently, there are more coming. A whole busload of Public Works folks will be here at seven.
All right. Then you know what? I'm going to ask the council if we can come back to these presentations because of the adjustments in the agenda. The folks aren't here, and I want to respect the fact that we gave them a timeline. I would ask, ask the pleasure of the council to go into citizen communication at this time. Is there a motion? Mr. Douglas?
So move.
Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Teeter?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Before we get into citizen communication, per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city council is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. All right, now with that said, I have a ton of people that wish to come up and speak, which is fine by me. However, it is very important that we abide by the three-minute rule. Mr. Attorney, would you like to address that?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Pursuant to council policy 20, which was adopted in 2011, the city council's rules for citizen communications limit speakers to three minutes each, but that can be extended to five minutes total with the approval of the whole city council. Questions are for the city council to ask. However, it's not a time to be used to engage in discussions or debate. Personal attacks are prohibited, and it is limited to discussion of the business and affairs of the city of Commerce City.
Thank you. With that said, I'll start calling names. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes' opportunity to communicate with the council. We'll start with Maria Zubia.
Good evening, city council members and mayor Ford. My name's Maria Zubia. I live at 6295 E-66 Avenue in Commerce City. I work for Kids First Healthcare, and I oversee our Voice Youth Advisory Boards. I personally advise the two middle school groups. VOICE stands for Voicing Our Imperative Health Concerns every day. A while back, the Kearney Middle School members requested that I invite all of you to meet with them, as it is difficult for them as students to come here to speak to you. So we are grateful that city council members, Mr. Steve Douglas and Jose Guardiola, were able to attend, so thank you from all of us. Most of the students couldn't make it tonight, so the ones that are here will try their best to get the message, the message to you on behalf of the group. They worked very hard in collecting over 200 surveys regarding the traffic safety issues by their school. I brought copies of the presentation with the survey results, that you are welcome to have a copy of, and I want to thank you for your time. I will now pass it on to our youth to speak to you, and they should be listed on the, on the list to speak next. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I mean, some of these are hard to read, but I'm going to give it a shot. This is Saul, from Kearney Middle School. Is there a Saul?
Yes.
Okay, Saul, come on forward. And just your name, because you're, of your age, we don't want your address tonight.
All right, my name's Saul Socero, and I am a student from Kearney Middle School. I am a Voice Youth Advisory Board member. I am here tonight to ask that you please take action in making our streets safer by our school and by all the other schools in our area. The survey we did at our school indicates that 69% of the students surveyed believe there is a traffic problem by our school. Over 61% of the students believe that our teachers put themselves in danger when they help us cross the street. The following are the suggested, the suggestions with the most votes. A stoplight at the corner of 62nd Avenue and Kearney Street, those were 142 votes. Crosswalks with lights similar to the ones across from Pioneer Park, 131 votes. Speed bumps to slow down the speeding cars, 105 votes. Police officers to help direct traffic had only 83 votes. Our suggestions is the stoplight on the corner and the crosswalks with... Our suggestions is the stoplight on the corner and the crosswalks with lights on both streets by our school. Thank you for your time.
Well, I want to, before you leave, I think it's important to let you know we admire the fact that you're identifying issues within the community that can be dangerous to kids, especially for crosswalks and signals. We take that very seriously. I'm looking forward to reading the entire report and the survey, and we'll make sure that our staff is reaching back out to the kids that have participated in Miss Zubia to let you know what we're doing at our end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yosa Lynn? Is that right? Yosa Lynn? Yoceline?
Good evening.
Again, all I need is your name, no address.
Okay. My name is Yocelyn Rojas, and I am also a student at Kearney Middle School, and I am a Voice Youth Advisory Board member. I am here tonight to ask that you please consider some of our other ideas. As you can tell, we are very worried about the traffic safety issue at our school and other schools, especially elementary schools. We are worried about the safety when we have a walk at night as the street light on the posts aren't always working as they go on and off. We noticed that traffic lights around the city could use additional turn signals as they will help with the traffic problem, especially when people who walk are trying to cross on busy streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, we really admire the fact that you come before council with some of your concerns, and we'll make sure all of you tonight that come up and speak on these school concerns that our staff reaches out through Maria Zubia and gets you the information of what you're asking for, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Isabella. Just your name, no address.
My name is Isabella Velasco. I am also a student at Kearney Middle School, and I am a Voice Youth Advisory Board member. I'm here tonight to ask that you please consider some of our other ideas. We are worried about the immigration issues, as many kids may worry about their parents, and it's hard for them. How can people trust the police if they fear that the police will only work with the immigration? We, as a group, came up with many suggestions to help the homeless. One of them is that city provide them with jobs and use empty buildings as shelters for them. We have asked, why is it that the city won't allow the ice cream trucks to sell ice cream and the corn vendors to sell corn? These are honest jobs that help people support their families, yet the city has allowed marijuana to be sold. We want the city to consider having a limit on marijuana stores. There are too many in other places already. Thank you for listening to our requests.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, Jacob Wilson. No Jacob Wilson? Well, we'll move on. Brandy Nichols. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. My name is Brandy Nichols. I live up in the Buffalo Run area, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we're really serious about not wanting the fracking up there in our area. A lot of us feel that there are plenty of other spaces within the state of Colorado that are oil-rich that can be considered versus drilling horizontally underneath our homes. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming in this evening. Ron Woodfinn? I don't think I got the last name right. Come on up, Ron. Name and address for the record, please.
Ron Woodfinn, 10536 Unity Parkway in Commerce City. Just wanted to give our concerns for these locations in regard to the fracking. Want to make sure that all the citizens have an opportunity to give their concerns in detail. Go forward from there.
Great, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thanks.
Steven Stella Stock? Please come forward. Did you name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Steven Stella Stock, 16280 East 119th Avenue. We're here because of the concerns about the fracking in the gas industry in our neighborhood.
We hope that you'll reject these applications and permits and tell them to go elsewhere. There's too many schools, too many homes, too many developments being built. We don't need the pollution or the water problems. We have water restrictions as is. Fracking uses nothing but water, and when it does return it to the land, it pollutes it, so there's no safety around them. I wish we would just deny the applications and permits, please.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for coming in. Kylie Trujillo?
Good evening, city council and mayor.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kelly Trujillo. I live at 16464 East 117th Avenue. Since we only have three minutes, not 55 minutes, which I could talk and talk, I've limited my comments to my iPad. My name is Kelly Trujillo, and I live in the villages of Buffalo Run with my family since 2005. I am concerned about the seven proposed fracking location bases in a small 10-square-mile area of densely populated homes with two schools. There have been several recent articles published by esteemed academic institutions. All of these articles have been well-written and peer-reviewed. There is a significant medical risk, one noting up to a four-time increase of acute lymphomic leukemia in people living 1,000 feet within oil and gas operations. A recent study from the University of Colorado shows an eightfold increase lifetime risk of cancer in those closest to oil and gas operations, within 500 feet the proposed distance set forth by the COGCC. This is very concerning to me personally, as my own family, my husband contracted kidney cancer at the age of 38 with no known hereditary or gene mutations. It was ruled as environmental cancer. Being just barely a year cancer-free, our family is very concerned about the thought of having fracking so close to our homes with so much unknown, but the definitive risks have been called out. In any other scenario, conducting randomized trials on unsuspected people living within the range of these operations would be unethical and completely inappropriate, like knowingly subjecting a pregnant mother to volatile organic chemicals known to cause cancer. This data is already sound and without a doubt demonstrates a significant risk. This fact has been ignored by the COGCC and dismissed by its physician leadership without any substantial independent peer-reviewed studies to the contrary. This practice is horrifying, barbaric, and in a direct conflict with our democratic rights. We would never tolerate a pharmaceutical company proceeding with a drug that showed the same level of harmful data. It would be shut down and taken off the market. Even if significant health benefits were found from such a drug, it would require a significant informed consent, an ideal the oil and gas industry has never been held to. Three of my grandparents died from lung cancer, like the tobacco industry in the 60s and 70s. This data is being ignored by an industry giant unwilling to put forth the effort to commit to public safety as they continue to put profits above our health. As a resident and in line with my democratic rights, I have a right to have a voice in issues that impact our health. I ask Commerce City Council to put a one-year moratorium on fracking in Commerce City with the possibility of renewal, Commerce City to sign on for the Martinez Amicus brief, and be transparent in all matters related to fracking. I should not have known about extractions intent in the villages of Buffalo Run before the city. At this time, there's just not enough data that proves it isn't harmful and no definitive safe distance within our neighborhoods. Oil and gas is not going anywhere, so waiting a year to make a more informed decision for our community can only ensure its success and impacts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Good. Again, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Susan Good. My address is 17938 East 105th Avenue. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to express my views. I moved to Commerce City in 2009, and the reason that I selected the community that I did was because of the emphasis on community, family, health, activities, and open space. And my concern with what I'm hearing about what's happening with fracking and the possibility in my specific community is related to the earthquakes that have happened in Oklahoma. And while there is not specific evidence at this time, there is more and more correlation being drawn between fracking and the increase in earthquakes in Oklahoma, to the point where the risk is paralleling California. And knowing in our community, and again, one of the things that I considered in moving to the Commerce City and reunion area was the prevalence that we have with bentonite. And that was one of the considerations, and I actually looked for engineering reports to see if the land that my home was built on was secure. And knowing what I know about Oklahoma and the possibility of earthquakes, I ask for more time from the city council to do further investigation and review, and a one-year moratorium with the possibility of renewal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan Noble.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the city manager and the city attorney for their presentation tonight.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Susan Noble, 10642 Oleath Street. I wanted to make a small point about the comment that was made at the beginning regarding the size of the pads. Some of these pads are quite large, and since extraction's plan is for different applications on one pad, there are going to be well over 50 wells on that pad, not to mention the water tanks and so forth that go along with them and the storage tanks. I know that a council goal is to preserve and nurture a quality community to improve resident health and safety. And that is an important goal, and that's why we're here today. When we formed a loosely knit group of North Range Concerned Citizens, our goal isn't simply to protect the North Range of Commerce City, but all of Commerce City from industrial use in residential areas. I wanted to also tell you that I spoke at length with Kevin Krieger, who was your peer in Broomfield. Like Commerce City, extraction, oil and gas, is the company that led to the initiative passed last November by an overwhelming number of residents who wanted decisions regarding oil and gas made that don't adversely impact the health, safety, and welfare of families and the environment. Councilmember Krieger would very much welcome talking with any of you individually about their experiences with extraction. Extraction has a very poor record in terms of being an honest broker with cities. They started with 26 wells, wound up at 140 before they knew what was happening, and we know how quickly this is happening here. And then the negotiation was based on the number of 140 instead of the number of 26. So it's something important to keep an eye on, and Councilmember Krieger would love to talk with any of you, and would be here tonight himself if he didn't have a conflict. And one final note is that your public affairs officer sent out a notice last week on behalf of Commerce City about the ground-level ozone, that that was one area that the City of Commerce City is failing to meet. One of the reasons that we're not meeting it, according to the post made by your public affairs officer, was oil and gas development, and that's without any of these from extraction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a Carly. Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Carly Soller. I live at 10563 Joplin Street in Commerce City, Colorado, and I'd like to give my time to Dan Leffwitch.
All right, Mr. Leffwitch.
Thank you, council, and also thank you for the extra time. My name's Dan Leffwitch, 1295 Wildwood Road in Boulder. I am here tonight because I'm co-council on the Martinez case that is currently pending before the Colorado Supreme Court on behalf of six youth plaintiffs seeking a moratorium on permitting at the COGCC until the agency can demonstrate that its decisions protect the public health, safety, and the environment, including not adding to climate change. Now, the reason why I'm here is to give you some context for why the Martinez opinion is important to your decision-making processes. The Court of Appeals in the Martinez case, which is a binding decision in the state of Colorado, this is a sea change in this state as far as permitting decisions on oil and gas is concerned. The Court of Appeals found that the agency had been applying an incorrect interpretation of its statutory mandate under the Oil and Gas Conservation Act. The agency had been applying, using the word, seizing on the word "balance" that's in the statute, and saying, "Well, we need to balance the oil and gas companies' economic interests and technical feasibility interests and all kinds of competing interests against the public health and safety in our permitting decisions." Now, the Court of Appeals said that was incorrect, that the amendments to the act over time had indicated a move away from unfettered oil and gas development and incorporation of greater and greater protections for the public health, safety, and the environment. And the court said that the clear language of the act, supported by the act's legislative evolution and the commission's own enforcement criteria mandates that the development of oil and gas in Colorado be regulated, subject to the protection of public health, safety, and the environment, including protection of the environment and wildlife resources. Now, this is important because the Court of Appeals' opinion is a published decision. Under Colorado appellate rule 35E, published decisions are binding on all lower courts in the state. That means they're binding as well on the agency, they're binding on this city council's decisions. Now, the COGCC is required to demonstrate, not just state, but demonstrate, using facts, that its permits protect public health and safety and the environment. The setback rules, spacing rules, that will be at issue before this council have not been shown to be, protect the public health, safety, and the environment. In fact, all the data suggests otherwise. Now, I'm going to point you to the fact that the Front Range currently has a grade that is not acceptable, and I hope that I can have my own time as well. I am on the council's. I am on the council's.
I'm going to give you the ladies' three minutes that was here a minute ago, and your three minutes started just now.
Thank you. The Front Range has a grade of F in terms of its air quality. Now, also, I would hope that the council would reach out to your counterparts in Broomfield and especially in Erie. There have been mothers recently who have tested their children, one a six-year-old boy, and you may have seen this on the news, another a four-year-old boy, for VOC levels because they live within one mile of 158 wells, abandoned and operating wells. And those VOC levels showed extremely alarming levels of benzene and ethyl benzene, 85th, 90th percentile for a six-year-old boy, a four-year-old boy. And that's an indication that these children are being impacted by oil and gas development, and the COGCC has allowed unfettered oil and gas development to alter their health and safety. Now, I'll also point the council to a couple of recent events. One is a well in Berthoud last October. It was an abandoned well, it'd been abandoned for 34 years. Suddenly, it starts spewing the black drilling mud. Well, Extraction Oil and Gas was on-site. This was a Sunday. They don't own the well, but they were on-site within a couple of hours to help with the cleanup. How did they know about that? Well, it's because they saw pressure dropping in their own active well that they were drilling over 3,000 feet away. Now, the COGCC investigated that event and said it was an oddity they couldn't figure out. There were wells less than 100 feet away that didn't impact that abandoned well, but Extraction's well more than 3,000 feet away did impact that well. Now, that's very important because that shows that the COGCC does not have a handle on its spacing rules. It does not know whether active wells, new wells that are being drilled, are going to impact abandoned wells that are littered throughout this state, all right? So that's very important. Now, the other is Extraction's explosion in the Windsor area, the Stromberger pad. They have never explained why that happened. And if you ask me, this council can issue a moratorium on these permits until Extraction comes up with an explanation to show that the explosion risk is accounted for and the public health and safety is insured before permits are issued. Now, I'll also ask the council to consider a moratorium until the Martinez case is decided definitively at the Supreme Court. The current status is that it's binding on all lower courts in this state, it's binding on the decisions of this city council, and it's binding on the COGCC. So, thank you.
Phil Doe. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Philip Doe. I live at 7140 South Depew Street in Littleton, Colorado. I'm the environmental director, forbid the change. I'm brief by nature, so nobody had to cede any time to me. You know, there's a lot of talk about fracking being very productive and good for the state of Colorado economically, but the facts undercut that tremendously. The Wall Street Journal recently wrote a report showing that the fracking industry in this country has spent $280 billion more than it's made since the fracking explosion about 10 years ago. That's 280 billion. Now, let's diminish the world down to Extraction. They've lost almost 1.8 billion in the time they've been alive, which is not very long. They rewarded their CEO and president $60 million a couple of years ago for continuing to lose money over the life of their existence. They claim they can make money at $50 a barrel of oil. I have a very good friend who's a retired physics professor, environmental scientist, taught at Gustavus Adolphus, has done a number of studies. He lives in the oil patch, he lives in Windsor. He's looked at the logs from the COGCC, he's looked at the own production costs from Extraction. There is no way that Extraction can make money until oil is at $99 a barrel. That is the reason they're losing money, have never shown a profit. You, in my opinion, are inviting a nuisance under the law into your city. We have thousands of abandoned wells in this state. They cost $85,000 a piece to close. If Extraction comes in here and goes broke, you are left with their mess, and that includes closing all those wells. Forget about the public health prospects if they do come in, but you're left with a huge baggage, probably in the hundreds of millions of dollars, to clean up their mess. These should be your primary considerations beyond just the public health issues. This is not a business, this is not a business that's making money. This is a business that's losing money, and it only continues because Wall Street is willing to loan it more money, because Wall Street gets a cut of every bond that's sold. This is not a business. This is a Ponzi scheme. Be careful about what you do here. It's very important to these people. And one-year moratorium is little enough, really, given what faces you. I mean, this is a real racket, in my opinion, and you should be very careful about how the public is subjected to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tamara.
Councilmembers, Mayor, Tamara Graff, 15862 East 107th Avenue. Just want to thank you for your time. I would also like to oppose Extraction Oil and Gas's industrial use in our residential neighborhoods, that being underneath my home. I'd like us to, I'd like to ask you to support a one-year moratorium with the option of renewals, to consider the health effects in our neighborhood. And I would also like you to join with 14 other communities, including towns and, excuse me, counties, that have supported the Amicus brief to join the Martinez case. I'd like you to suggest doing that. And if I have any remaining time, can I offer it back to Mr. Leffwitch? Do you have more to share?
I think not.
Okay, then that's all. Thank you, that was very helpful.
Perry Sylvie.
My name is Perry Sylvie, 10487 URA Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for hearing all of our, you know, the citizens here in Commerce City. We're proud to be Commerce City residents, we're proud to be here. This is something that, you know, again, with the oil and gas being a big issue in this city, is something that, it's important, I think, that they do drill, but I don't think it's important that they drill where they're planning to drill. I do believe that there are people's lives at stake, not just in our city, but all throughout this state, and I think it's important that people drill, they can drill all over the place. There's plenty of space all over other spaces in Commerce City that could be potential spaces for drilling operations, and I just think it's very odd when you look at the map to see it right underneath entire neighborhoods, complete neighborhoods. When we moved in in 2004, it was a space that was brand-new, nice, open space. We really enjoy it there. We've got great parks, we've got schools, there's a lot of things going on. My daughter just turned six, and it's very important that she has a great place to enjoy life, and we really, we have got another daughter who's three years old, and again, it's something that we want them to enjoy their time in the parks and in the playgrounds, at school. I don't want to have to move, but it definitely is a consideration. If something like this happens, I don't really feel comfortable living in Commerce City where there's, you know, going to be drills and there's going to be rigs right next to our house where there's a, I'm a safety director for a construction company, so I think construction is very important, but when you start talking about doing this right underneath my home, I don't think that is a great decision, that I think you guys as council, you know, should take that seriously. I do, I do think oil and gas is important, just not where we live. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name's Glenn Murray. I'm your only farmer in the city. My address, 11010 Havana Street, Brighton. And the reason I'm here to speak to you tonight, I'm going to change the subject a little bit here, I received a letter from your Neighborhood Services Division here dated May 18th, and it has to do with your weed ordinances. And I agree with almost all of it, except the large acreage, more than five acres. And the reason I brought my samples with me, these particular species of weeds, they don't quite agree with that 20-foot buffer around those larger parcels. As a matter of fact, they have a tendency to move off of there. And as a farmer here, matter of fact, I have been, my family has been here at the same place for a little over a century right now, so I've been around, I've seen what's happened, and I'm unfortunately the beneficiary of a lot of these weeds, and these are the ones that structurally blow, not counting the seed that comes off of the other weeds that blow across, and are nuisance for other property owners, other neighbors. And I don't understand the purpose, to be honest with you, 20-foot buffer around 100-acre field is a joke. It accomplishes nothing, I guess it makes somebody feel good. I know I've heard the argument that, well, it costs, so many times we get these absentee owners, okay? And if it's in the city, if my understanding is correct, it is owned, it is owned something. Now, the tax on that property doesn't change until the use changes. And in most cases, the large acreage, it is either farmed or it needs to be maintained, and that's my argument. Now, the developers, the people that are many times, most times absent, as far as the maintenance part, they want to keep that as cheap as they possibly can. Well, it's pretty easy to, for the city to regulate that. Either you farm it, or you maintain it, or the property tax changes to whatever the use is. And if it's not being farmed, then the use should be whatever it is, residential, industrial, commercial, whatever it is. And I think you're going to find very quickly, a developer will agree to pay for maintenance on the property. And to give you an example, to mow or spray these weeds, you're probably looking at a cost on a yearly basis of, let's just, it's 50 to 100 bucks is what it's going to cost to maintain your property. You maintain yours, but yet these large acreage, 20 feet around the outside, I'm sorry, members of the council, that's a joke, you're accomplishing absolutely nothing by doing that. So I would very strongly encourage you to do away with that. People either maintain their property, or else they pay the tax that the property is owned, and I think we can solve this problem very easy, but it really is an issue. These are just two samples, there's more weeds. These happen to be a Russian thistle on this side, this is a tumble mustard weed on this side, and there's many more. But I encourage you to change that, it is a problem for particularly myself. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right, Derek Seifried. Need your name and address for the record, please.
Derek Seifried, 12411 East 106 Place, Commerce City, Colorado. Councilmembers, thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to write to voice our family's concerns around the Mid-Continent Energy Petroleum site, the spacing letters we've received in the Turnberry neighborhood. We've lived in our home near this site for 10-plus years. We value the Commerce City and Adams County area. We call home as a place that is safe, it's a close-knit community, and we value the principle of having the right and ability to raise our family in an area that is meant to be a neighborhood, not in an industrial site. These values we believed in 10 years ago, we still believe and hold these values to remain true now. Large-scale industrial neighborhood oil and gas drilling does not make sense in this area. It will impact our area elementary schools, many homes, and add many industrial trucks on our neighborhood roads. This does not belong here. This type of project is meant to be in the middle of the country, not in the middle of our community. I understand how money talks, but no matter how much oil and gas industry throws at marketing and political campaigns, the truth is in the results. You've heard many facts here tonight, and should be in your consideration. I've studied the personal and public concerns this project would impact, such as safety, pipeline failures, like the tragic Firestone House explosion, air quality, methane and other VOCs in our air, truck traffic, and just the Denver Post article on 11117, reported PDC Energy Incorporated has reached more than a $22 million settlement with the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, and state regulators for leaking small-causing pollutants into the air from its oil and gas operations in Weld and Adams Counties dating back roughly four years. And we're considering putting this large-scale industrial project in our schools and neighborhoods backyard. That, to me, just doesn't make sense. I teach at Prairie View Middle School, many of my students with now the zoning are coming from the Turnberry neighborhood. I don't want to have to talk to these students that come from Turnberry neighborhood and say, "Hey, where are you guys at? You're over at Turnberry?" Oh, I mean, Antelope Pad? That is not what I came to 10 years ago. It is Turnberry neighborhood, we want it to remain that way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Teresa.
Hi, my name is Teresa Eskridge, 10553 Joplin Street. And my biggest concerns with fracking are accountability, decreased property values, and environmental damages. What guarantees do I have from you that in the event something does go wrong with the drilling above ground or under our homes, that the fracking company will be held accountable? My home is my biggest investment, and of course, I am deeply concerned. I have absolutely no control what they plan to do under my house. I need assurances that the investment we have made into our family home is not going to be decreased due to their actions. Who is to guarantee to me that they don't turn tail and run in the event something bad and/or catastrophic does happen with the drilling sites and/or drilling under our homes? Have you checked their solvency to make sure they have the funds necessary to clean up any such instances? What guarantees and assurances do you have from them? That they will clean up any and all accidents if and when they occur? What happens when they are done with us? After they have drained everything they deem worthwhile from under our homes, are they going to remove absolutely everything that they have installed under our homes and above ground, or are they going to leave the toxic waste dump and the ice hoes they have created all across the land? Who holds them accountable, and who will make sure they clean up everything once they are done? Is it you? Is it the state? I read the Longmont City Council has banned fracking within city limits, but that is almost deceiving to me, because they can still horizontally drill everywhere they want within city limits, they just cannot install any drill pads and such within the city limits. With that being said, I know that we cannot stop this as the state supersedes us, supersedes us all. I just want to know who is going to hold them accountable for any damages and such to my property, the environment, and that they will clean up and remove everything they brought with them once they are done with us. Who will make sure the oil and gas company hold up their end of bargain? Who will guarantee this to me? Please, in state, a one-year moratorium, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Sylvie.
I want them to experience this too. My name is Stephanie Sylvie, 10487 URA Street. Thank you, guys, for shifting tonight's agenda. I am opposed to the plans for Extraction and any industrial use in residential areas. I support a moratorium on the subject, preferably a perpetual moratorium. I believe that it is important that the city join the other 14 groups in the Martinez case lawsuit. I ask you to think about your answers. I ask you to think about your answers to these questions. If you are going to consider these extraction wells, what does the council wish to accomplish? What do you, and what does oil and gas, say is beneficial to fracking in residential areas? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amber Smith. She's not in here? All right, we'll go to Stacy Latkis. Is there Stacy? Chris. Barks? Bags? I can't remember. No, Chris? All right, we'll go to Guillermo Serna.
Guillermo Serna, 14122 East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. Four of you city council persons that are new, haven't heard this before. The other five have. We've been through this, with just one drilling. Now they're expanding. They asked for pipes to go through our city. We gave it to them. All they have to do is be patient, and let's wait. We had these rooms full here when we had the participation on the first try. And the city, okay, set an example for the rest of the state. The city council at that time voted to wait and see with the referendum. I don't know what the laws has changed or whatever, but I think that you have to give yourself that time, and not rush into this. Because if they can, out of one hole, if they can expand to three, they can also expand to 12. We spend a lot of time and money trying to find water for this city for the next 100 years. Well, the wells that they're doing, how much are they going to spend per drill off of this one little hole? The arsenal, the airport. I understand that we need all of this, but according to what they say, this is only 100 years. We should be preparing for the future, not just temporarily. The sun, they say that's where it's at, and we should be looking at that. These people are bright people. When they came in here, they were expecting something, for their lifetime, for their kids. Well, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But you, the city council, whether you're new, or old, or the old mayor.
Thanks, Guillermo.
I think that give yourself that time, and give the community, okay? Come up with other ideas that we didn't come up with in the past. You gotta sit, old councilwoman back here, okay? We disagreed on a lot of things, but when it came to this community, we wanted to make sure that we had every link, okay, to make it better. And I think that if we give up here now, the rest of the state may falter, and we won't set that example. Think about it, it's in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back through some of these that I called earlier that weren't in the room at the time. Jacob Wilson.
Jacob Wilson reside at 10618 Bondway in Commerce City. I come here on a different matter. City council, mayor, staff, I want to make a brief statement for the record. As a private citizen here in Commerce City, I would highly encourage the city council, the mayor, and the city staff to devise a plan to find within our city budget to pay our elected officials at least minimum wage for their time for representing our Commerce Cities here. We, as a city, found the resources to do five projects in five years, with one of them being the Bison Rec Center, which is coming online shortly, that costs more than 45 million, I believe. So I believe it's time that the city just compensate our elected officials for their time, and I also believe that it would pass overwhelmingly with city support if it's required to go to the ballot for a vote. From my experience, the vast majority of citizens are completely unaware that our elected officials here in Commerce City is almost a volunteer job for the amount of time that you guys are putting in. This is not about money, it's about doing what's right. Let's track our elected officials' hours, and create an accountability system to track those hours, and pay them accordingly. I believe it behooves the city as a city to just compensate our elected officials here in Commerce City. If signatures are required to get this issue on the ballot, I'm willing to go door-to-door to get them. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to help implement this into a city action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just for your information, I think it's important that everybody in the audience knows, we didn't ask you to come up here.
No, absolutely.
That's great, because sometimes that rumor gets out, and it's not a good one. But I would refer you to the city attorney if you wish to pursue an effort like that. There is a process to get that on the ballot, and that would, I believe, should be a citizen-driven initiative if the citizens so choose.
Is there a required amount of signatures to get it on?
There would be, yes, but the city attorney can talk you through that and explain what you would need, or the city clerk, one or the other, can help you to at least know what the requirements are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe it's about time.
Thank you. Amber Smith. Stacy Latkis. She left? Okay. Chris, from 117th Avenue. Oh, they left, both of them left, okay. I figured, that's what's on the sheet up here. Yeah, I have a list, and it's everybody except for, let's see, Mr. Murray and Mr. Wilson, were the only two that weren't here for fracking. All right, moving on, I have a few more. Lisa Jones. Did she also leave with them? They're on 117th as well.
Yes.
Okay, Lisa Jones is gone. Another one on 117th, Gina Tomato. Same thing, Randy DiMatteo, I'm assuming, same thing. Okay, one more. Barbara Mills.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Barbara Millsbury, I live at 1831 South Welch Circle in Lakewood, and I really appreciate your time. You guys are in a position where you can stop this before it gets out of hand in your city. Other cities in the state have just been fighting this, and people have been getting sick, and it's a heavy, toxic industry that should not be allowed this close to residential areas. Since the Martinez decision, there have been 14 explosions at well pads. The COGCC can't guarantee that this is safe. And you can try to imagine what the explosion and fire at the Windsor well pad would be like if it was so close to your residences and your schools and your churches, it's just kind of unthinkable. The health and safety of your citizens should be your primary focus, and not the economic success of a company such as extraction. As was pointed out, these young men have lost $1.8 billion, and they are geared into fracking within residential areas, near residences and people. And even if you're likely to lean toward the money and away from your public health and safety, then surely you'd want to make sure that the companies doing this were economically viable. So I would really caution you to look into those companies before you agree to let them do this in your city. These well pads are not required to have any environmental insurance, and you might think, well, what's environmental insurance? But when these tankers of gasoline drive through our cities, they have to have a million dollars' worth of insurance coverage to allay any damage that's done, otherwise the taxpayers are left to pick up the cost of this damage. The move in Colorado is now toward renewables, away from fossil fuels. We have legislation passed that will allow homeowners to put in battery storage in their homes, and so I would just really request that you listen to the voices of your citizens, and stop the move toward this toxic, heavy industry in your city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I went through the list of folks who signed up for citizen communication. I want to, I'm not going to let you come up and speak again, but if there's anybody in the audience who intended to sign up that didn't get the opportunity, now would be the time to raise your hand, let me know who you are, and I will allow you the chance to come up and have your three minutes. Okay, I'm going to start on the left side of the room. Oh, you know what, let's go with the, I don't know if it's Girl Scouts or what, but come on up. Come on up. You guys have been good sitting back there patiently. And I need you to state your names, but because of your age, I don't want your address.
I'm Annalisa Leba.
Hi, I'm Amaya Tunstall.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Hightower.
Good evening.
We are Troop 2042 from Commerce City, Colorado. Today, we are here to ask the council to add a flashing light and painted crosswalk on 100th and Chambers.
The three of us used to go to Second Creek Elementary. Before I moved out of the district, my mom and I would have to wait a very long time to cross Chambers. There are currently 60 children that live in Harvest Meadows and go to school at Second Creek and Stewart Middle School. If they walk to school, there is currently no painted crosswalks, flashing lights, or anything other than a crosswalk sign telling cars to stop.
With the addition of Frontera Park and Skate Park, there may be more than 60 people trying to cross, possibly mothers with their young children, currently in Reunion inside a neighborhood not on a main road, you currently have such a crosswalk.
In conclusion, we are asking for a flashing light and painted crosswalk across Chambers out on 100th Avenue, for the safety of the children of Harvest Meadows. We are Troop 2042, thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Hang on a second. After that kind of performance, I'm not going to let you get off that easy. I know you've had to sit here and listen to all this other stuff, and you've waited patiently to be able to come up and say that. I do think, not necessarily that there are questions, but we're a growing city, and we look at our budget, and we start putting in, and there's five signals that will go in next year. And we're continually growing, as you can see, the new construction, new roads, a lot of new houses every day. Because you came in and presented, I want to make sure that the city manager gets that information from both the children that were here from Kearney Middle School and had their survey, and as well as you three, that we have at least a study session brief to talk about the need, and even if we do a study, to make sure that it meets the warrants to be able to put in the infrastructure that you're talking about, and we'll make sure that information is relayed back to you. I don't know if you have a scout leader with you tonight, or a parent that can get with the city attorney that's standing here, or even better yet, the chief of police is in the back of the room, or Roger can walk to the back of the room. So the deputy city manager will walk to the back room, get the information so that we can make sure that we can return contact, so that you all know what's happening, and when and if something happens at our level, we'd invite you back to the council to be here when we make a decision on it. But thank you for coming in tonight. Mr. Mayor. City Manager McRae.
Just a quick clarifying question, I think the ladies are seeking a pedestrian crosswalk with weekends, those are in the neighborhood of about $10,000, so city council action specifically wouldn't be required, but I would ask for a city council direction if you would like us to study that and see if funds would permit us to install it.
I'm open for a motion. Mr. Tater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we allow staff to have a study session from this subject.
Is there a second? Mr. Hughesman.
Second to motion to have staff study the installation of crosswalk at 100th and Chambers.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Again, thank you to the young ladies for coming in. All right, now I'm going to go back to the list for citizen communication. Young lady in the front here. I'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Do I just start?
Name and address is all I need, right now.
Okay. This is Doron Cooper, and I'm Sharon Chung, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. We live at 17937 East 104th Way, Unit D in Reunion, and we're grateful for the opportunity to speak to you. I come from a place where it's called the town meeting, and this seems a lot more civilized. We moved here 10 years ago from Southern California. We wanted to get away from the earthquakes. We had a nice swimming pool in the backyard, and I could see cracks, and I could imagine as one day it came. And we had actually insurance against earthquakes. I haven't seen the opportunity to have fracking insurance. In fact, when we moved here, we moved here looking at the beautiful Rocky Mountains, and we really had no idea there was such a scary thing out there as fracking. And I know we can sugarcoat things and make it look better. As I said, we're educators, and we've seen it all inside the system of education. We obviously strongly oppose fracking in and near our resident areas. Fracking clearly looks industrial to me. Secondly, we urge a moratorium on fracking. And thirdly, we do ask the city to join the Martinez case. So I have just a few minutes, and I see the light is green, awesome. So what I want to say is I've lived through earthquakes, hurricanes, we lived in Hawaii and taught in Hawaii, and we saw volcanoes, and now you're seeing that on the news, but nobody told us when we came here and signed to buy our condo that there was this thing called fracking. It's unbelievable to me. And it's, the thing is, when you move to California, you've probably heard of earthquakes, and when you move to Hawaii, you've heard of volcanoes, but honestly, we never heard that there was this thing fracking was going to come right into our backyards. We feel honestly like we're being invaded, and I think many of you, because you live here, feel that too. And sometimes we're able to just kind of put blinders on and not really think about it, but this is real. But this is real. This is real. And you've heard so much evidence here with people talking tonight and two weeks ago. I was here seven years ago. It's...yeah, it's unbelievable. Thank you. Good luck. And if you need us all to go to the streets and protest, you have us. Just call us. Send out a notice. We'll be happy to do whatever needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.[628.03][628.03][applause] I believe there's one more gentleman on the right side of the room. My right. No? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Ryan Seestrom, 1800 Glenarm Place, Denver, Colorado, 80202. So again, my name's Ryan Seestrom. I'm with the Colorado Oil and Gas Association. Seems I might be the only one from my industry here this evening. I am one of the community outreach coordinators with the association. My job is to act as a liaison between our members, the oil and gas industry, and local governments. Our industry was founded...or our association, excuse me, was founded in 1984. We represent approximately 300 companies in the state, ranging from your larger corporations like Anadarko and Noble Energy, all the way down to smaller, potentially single-person, independent contractors. Please, as you move into discussions related to oil and gas, I ask you to keep in mind that myself and COGA is a resource. If I do not have answers directly, I guarantee you we have the resources to answer those questions for our member base, for our state. The oil and gas industry is very heavily regulated here in Colorado: CDPHE, COGCC, EPA, OSHA, just to name a few. And again, as you move forward with discussions related to oil and gas, I ask that you keep COGA, myself in mind. I'm available by phone 24/7 if you have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in tonight.[735.12][735.12][applause] All right, that concludes...is there more? One more, right in the back. And then we're going to stop after that. Come on up, sir.
My name is Don Myers. I live at 12432 East 105 Avenue. Mr. Mayor, members of council staff, thank you for hearing me. I'd like to take a quick walk down memory lane. Growing up in the '60s and '70s, I remember watching on the news where Lake Erie would be burning. We had race riots. We had cancer raids that were through the roof. Marlboro Man was on TV every night. That was then. We can look back, and we can see in hindsight how terrible it was, how wrong it was, how ridiculous it was that somebody didn't do something different. Fast forward a few years, and a long career in commercial auto insurance. I handled the trucking claims that the truckers that would be leaving the oil fields with this contaminated water would have accidents. I would ask them, I would talk to them personally. I would say to them, "What happened?" I would ask them, "What happened? What did you do after? Did you report the spill? It's just water." Those were the words I heard. So you can regulate this all day long and try to enforce it, but you have to get through to the people. You have to make them believe in that regulation. That's a problem. So looking back, in hindsight again, we can say to ourselves, "That was terrible." What I'm asking you gentlemen in the city to do is use foresight. Because in hindsight, we can say, "Just because it was okay, just because it was legal, doesn't mean it was right." A wise person once told me, "Just because you can, doesn't mean you should." Fracking is legal. Fracking is a way of life for many organizations, people, and so on. I understand that. I understand that you folks have the huge responsibility of balancing the different interests in this matter. What I'm asking you to do is use some foresight. That's harder. That's harder than looking back and using hindsight. I ask you to use foresight because you can and you should. Thank you.
Thank you.[890.12][890.12][applause] Again, I'll thank all of you for coming in tonight for Citizen Communication. And remember, it's the third Monday that we'll get a staff update like we did this evening. So you can always check our website and find out what's going on with oil and gas in our community. So thank you again for all coming in, and we're going to move on with our agenda. All right, now let's...let me go back. We moved everything around so much that I'm lost myself. All right, Daniel's Fund Scholarship recipients recognition. I'd like to invite Michelle Halsted forward to introduce the Daniel Fund representative. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. As some of you know, the city has five Daniel's Fund scholars this year. And instead of me telling you about them, I'm going to introduce our colleagues from the Daniel's Fund. We have four of them, I believe, with us tonight. But this is a tremendous honor for our youth, and we're happy to recognize them this evening.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for having us here today. My name is Bruce Womson. I'm Vice President of Media and Community Relations for the Daniel's Fund, and I have my colleague Laura Stefan here with the Daniel's Fund as well. To tell you a little bit about the Daniel's Fund and the scholarship, start by telling you about Bill Daniels, who was our founder. He was a cable television pioneer, an entrepreneur, and a philanthropist. He was known in his lifetime for his compassion for those in need, as well as his commitment to ethics and integrity. He established the Daniel's Fund as a private charitable foundation dedicated to making life better for the citizens of Colorado, New Mexico, Utah, and Wyoming. The Daniel's Fund continues Bill Daniels' legacy through grants to nonprofit organizations, scholarships to deserving students, and ethics programs. Since 2000, the Daniel's Fund has given more than $760 million in grants and scholarships. And in March, we just selected our latest class of 233 Daniel Scholars, bringing the total to more than 3,950 Daniel Scholars and more than $170 million in scholarships. The Daniel Scholarship Program is a four-year scholarship. It's for high school seniors who demonstrate exceptional character, leadership, and commitment to community service. The program offers resources and encouragement and inspiration as well, far beyond the financial assistance that's needed to earn a college degree. Our goal at the Daniel Scholarship...at the Daniel's...at the Daniel's Fund is to help each Daniel Scholar succeed in college and ultimately become an independent and successful and a rewarding career and actively engaged in their communities. The five students we're honoring tonight are excellent examples of these qualities that we look for in Daniel Scholars. And as we reviewed the applications of these young people, some of the impressive things that stood out beyond their academic achievements were how hardworking they are, their commitment to their families, in many cases, working to help support their families and themselves, and giving back to others by mentoring other students in many other ways. So we're excited tonight to be here to recognize Jennifer Carrillo, Dana Elliott.[1113.81][1113.81][applause] Jessica may not be with us tonight. And also Aaron Jimenez, who I know also was not able to be with us tonight.[1173.81][1173.81][applause] We're excited to welcome you all to the Daniel Scholar family and look forward to all the great things that you'll do in the future.
Don't go sit down yet.[1189.81][1189.81][applause]
Thank you.
I need the scholars to come back up, the recipients to come back up, please, and the presenters. We're going to have the council come down. I do have some plaques. We want to take our picture with you and thank you personally. It's a great honor, and it's even a bigger honor to have five Daniel Scholar recipients from our community this year. It's awesome. I know we had a scholar, a Daniel Scholar recipient that went on to Georgetown, became my mayor pro tem, and is now state senator, Dominic Moreno. There's nothing you can't do, so keep that in mind. So we wish you good luck and look forward to seeing you come back to this community and do some amazing things yourselves. So if you'll please join me down front.
Sean, in case you didn't know, Jaleen is Dominic's niece.
Oh, yeah, well, go figure, huh? I didn't know that. Come on down, guys. Ladies.
Right over here.
Is there anything you can do about the air conditioning? I just got to tell you.
You can turn it off on me.
Turn it off.
You're suffering from my disease.
He didn't say what he meant.
That was funny.[1313.81][1313.81][laughter]
I thought it might as well be telling him I wasn't going to set the projector up today. See it over there?
I do. I thought it was just, you know, taking pictures. You found the light out here?
Nope. Yeah, you know what? It'll be there in two weeks on Monday, too.
Do you remember? Person who never received a scholarship.
Yeah. You need it.[1367.81][1367.81][laughter]
All right. See all the Public Works folks in the back, waiting patiently? We're finally to that point in the agenda. So I'd like to invite all the Public Works staff forward, please. And you don't all have to state your names. We know most of you, or I know most of you anyhow. But thank you for being here tonight. Turn it over to Michelle for a short piece, and then we'll get to the proclamation.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, this is an opportunity to recognize the great Public Works employees who are behind me and those who also couldn't be here tonight. They provide a vital community service, whether it's taking care of our streets, managing our trash, making sure our stormwater is safe, and making sure pedestrians can travel around the city very safely. On behalf of the Public Works Department, I would like to invite council and the community to attend the department's annual Touch a Truck event, which will be June 21st from 4:00 to 7:30 PM at the Municipal Services Center on Rosemary Street. You, your family members, and kids of all ages are invited to paint plows, enjoy games and music, learn more about construction projects, learn more about our trash and recycling program, and really touch the vehicles that make our city safer. So I'd like to encourage everyone to do that. And rumor has it, there may be a dunk tank, so just saying.
Well, if rumor has it, the mayor's getting in there, and it ain't happening.[1481.81][1481.81][laughter] Oh, that's right. Thank God, I'm out of town. Brian will have to step in for me.[1489.81][1489.81][laughter] All right, thank you. And just looking at some of the folks that you have behind you, there's a lot of years of service to this community standing up in the room tonight. And, you know, I was there and worked with several of the folks that are standing there tonight. And I left my position in Public Works 20 years ago to run for office the first time. And I worked with some of the folks for 10 years prior to that in Public Works. And I want to just give you all a hand for all the years of service that you have put into this community and the efforts to make sure that our residents have good streets and good parks and everything else that you guys participate in. Thank you for everything you do. Most of the time, we get a...you get to see people that are, you know, the directors of departments and everything else. But to see the people that actually are out in the community, working hard to make sure we have a great place to live and great roads to drive on, this is a handful of them here today, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you very much for what you do.[1562.81][1562.81][applause] Mr. Sheasley, how about we read their proclamation?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets and bridges, drainage, public buildings, fleet, and solid waste and recycling management; and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of this infrastructure, as well as the associated planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work staff; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated Public Works Department personnel is materially influenced by their attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City proclaims the week of May 20 to 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week in Commerce City. Be it further resolved that we call upon all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you. Proclamation's been read. I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation of Public Works Week.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to prove the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. If you all join me down front to take a picture with the Public Works staff.[1667.81][1667.81][laughter][1672.81][1672.81][applause] Glad to see them in the audience tonight. It's the DeGuero family. I'd like to invite the family forward to the podium.
All of you.
Just get up there. Oh, you know what? We don't have enough room in this building for the whole DeGuero family, but please come on up and get in front of that podium. And we have some of the DeGueros work for us, at least one does.
Sherry.
Sherry, out of Buffalo Run.
Hi, daughter.
I know, we love to see you. Sherry, out of Buffalo Run. I know, we love to see her. Where's she at tonight? Oh, you know what, wait till I see her. I will go up and ask her, how come you weren't there to support your daddy? All right. City Attorney, please read the proclamation.
Whereas sport has long been recognized as a universal language that connects people regardless of origin, background, economic status, and religious beliefs, and whereas Commerce City has a rich history of amateur athletes and dedicated coaches, and whereas the DeGuero family has been synonymous with the Adam City High School wrestling program for more than three decades, both on and off the mat, whereas as head coach, Tom DeGuero built a legacy of leadership within the wrestling program for 26 years, resulting in a successful youth and high school system and securing a family legacy of state and collegiate champions, and whereas the DeGuero family recently received the Family Heritage Award, inducted into the Colorado chapter of the National High School Wrestling Hall of Fame, acknowledging the numerous contributions of Tom, his nine siblings, and subsequent generations, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City honors the contributions of the DeGuero family to sport and community and congratulates them on receiving the Family Heritage Award.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion, Mr. Teeter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing the DeGuero family.
Okay, how about Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Short discussion real quick. I personally wanna thank the DeGuero family, and I know, Tom, you've done a ton, but it's been the whole DeGuero family over the years that have done so much. As a graduate of Adam City, we had one of the best wrestling clubs in the state of Colorado, and it's been that way ever since the DeGueros have been involved. So you haven't just touched the wrestlers in this community, but you've touched so many families over the years, and it's great that I get the opportunity to help recognize the efforts of the DeGuero family in this community. So thank you for everything you've done and everything that your family will continue to do. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, well, DeGuero family, yes, thank you very much. You know you followed a very historical person before you, Tom, was Joe Gillis, and he would be very proud of what you've done for this community and your family and the people of Commerce City, to follow in his footsteps and continue the great efforts that the wrestlers of Commerce City have done over the years. So, again, I congratulate you. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas, do you have something?
No. Thank you very much.
All right.
For your support.
So I have a motion and a second. On the floor, the proclamation's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Please come down and let's recognize the DeGuero family.
I just wanna say thank you. We're lucky that we grew up in a community of families whose greatest treasures are their children, so we're just like, this has allowed us to thrive here in Commerce City. We've had a lot of support through the years from the city, from Adam City High School, from coaches, mentors, and teachers that we've had before us, so I wanna thank you guys for this evening, it's made it, it's a great day for us. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you to the DeGuero family. All right, one more. Mental Health Month proclamation, I'd like to invite Linda Lewis from Community Reach forward. You don't look like Linda Lewis. I guess. All right. Mental Health Week, you wanna, wanna talk to us, or Mental Health Month. We hear it all the time at Rotary, very involved. You wanna give us a short synopsis of what you're doing with mental health at Community Reach?
Sure. So as a lot of you probably know, Community Reach Center is the mental health provider that serves the Adams County area. We've been, we've had a presence in Adams County for 60 years, and it actually all started here in Commerce City. So the outpatient office that's still currently serving hundreds of hundreds of Commerce City residents over here on 72nd Avenue, that was the very first outpatient presence that we had in Colorado. So we're currently serving about 20,000 individuals, the youngest child to the oldest senior citizen, and we're extremely grateful for the consistent support that we've received from Commerce City all these years.
Great. Thank you very much. Will the City Attorney please read the proclamation?
Whereas Mental Health Month has been observed since 1949 to raise awareness of mental health conditions and the importance of mental health, and whereas mental health promotion starts in childhood and all Coloradans benefit from access to early health education, prevention, and intervention, and whereas half of all chronic mental illness begins by age 14 and three-quarters by age 24, and suicide is now the leading cause of death for youth between ages 10 through 14, and whereas more young Coloradans need to access emotional and mental health support every day in the community and during the school day, and whereas schools recognize increased access to services and support within the school day is crucial to assisting our youth, and whereas early childhood and family services that emphasize strong family relationships and healthy children foster individual well-being across our communities, and whereas Colorado continues to increase access to services that contribute to the promotion of a healthier state and make Colorado a leader in mental health in the United States, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Commerce City proclaims the month of May 2018 as Mental Health Month.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation for Mental Health Month.
Thank you, is there a second, Mr. Madera?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and if you'll all please join me down front with Lindy, we will take a picture. All right, that takes us through our proclamations and presentations portion of the meeting. Next item on the agenda is going to be, the amended agenda is going to be the executive session. So I am open for a motion from the City Council to go into an executive session. Mr. Hughesman?
I'd like to make a motion to, only second, to enter into an executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, parentheses four, parentheses A, B, and E, to receive legal advice and determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations with regard to oil and gas developments and regulation.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into that executive session as stated. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. For the audience, they have this down, let me see, for 40 minutes, is that correct? 40 minutes. I'm hoping that it doesn't take that long, but it may, so please bear with us, we do have an amended agenda. So get up, stretch your legs, and we'll plan on being back in here in approximately 40 minutes.
Calling the meeting back to order. Thank you for being patient. I know Benjamin is coming out here in a second, but I want to get things rolling. We've kept you waiting long enough. So, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'm open for a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2018. Mr. Teeter?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2018.
Thank you. Mr. Madera?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 5th, 2018. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I need a motion-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
I'm sorry. Once you're done with the minutes, I do have a question.
Okay. I'm open for a motion for the minutes of April 16th, 2018. Mr. Wardiola?
Motion to approve the minutes of April 16th, 2018.
Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that, but I think we have to excuse Mr. Huesman for that meeting?
No, we don't have to. After getting our legal counsel has told us that we don't have to-
That's right. You told me that last time. I forgot already.
Alright, so I have a motion and a second on the minutes of April 16th, 2018. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. McBroom?
A quick question for City Council. I understand that pursuant to the executive session, City Council may be considering taking some actions during the public meeting. You can either do that now, or you can wait and do it under administrative council business. I just wanted to let City Council know that if you're inclined to take action, now you certainly can.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we got Teeter and Wardiola. Is that- Alright, I'll continue with the agenda. Consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented for council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are five items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove an item off of the consent agenda? Saying none, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve the consent agenda as seated.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the titles on the consent agenda?
Resolution 2018-37, resolution approving grant of access easement to Fairmount Cemetery Company. Resolution 2018-43, resolution approving federal lands access program and federal lands transportation program project memorandum of agreement in authorizing the expenditure of funds. Resolution 2018-45, resolution approving second amendment to professional services agreement for engineering services with HDR Engineering, Inc. for the Tower Road widening project. Resolution 2018-46, resolution approving terms for the prepayment of the city's loan to the Buffalo Highlands Metropolitan District for the construction of 96th Avenue and authorizing actions related thereto. Ordinance 2160, an ordinance creating section 12-2011 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code regarding entrance upon closed public grounds.
Thank you. Motion and second titles have all been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Thank you. No, it's not working, Ben?
Ben's is not working.
Ben's is not working.
Let's try it again.
Okay. Try it again, Ben. For the record, consent agenda is approved. Eight in favor, one excused. Next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. We have one, ordinance 2167. Is there anyone on council that has any questions regarding this ordinance? Saying none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this ordinance? Saying none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
Like make a motion to approve ordinance 2167 on first reading. Council is seated.
Thank you. Mr. Wardiola?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Ordinance 2167, an ordinance amending the 2018 budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $4,500 for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof.
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, it is introduced, ordinance 2167, eight in favor, one excused absence. Next item on the agenda is our presentations. We'll start with the Anythink Library. I'd like to invite the library representative forward to give the presentation. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Pam Sanley and Smith, library director with Anythink Libraries. Thank you for taking this time this evening for a short update on what's happening at our library. First of all, in 2006, our library district was the poorest library district in the state of Colorado. And then, in November 2006, our voters in Adams County voted to increase our mill. And then, we were the second lowest-funded library system in Colorado. And the work that we've been able to do over the past 11 years gives us all an example of what a library for Adams County and for the 21st century can look like. We built four new libraries. We renovated three. Our library in Commerce City is an example of that renovation. They're filled with people and kids having fabulous times, reading and learning. Last year, we embarked on our third strategic plan, which is before you, and I'm just going to be very brief today. We took the year to talk with our community about what was important to them in Adams County. We asked them, what do you love about Adams County and what's missing? And our three strategies, community, culture, and career, is indicative of things that in our community, they said it was important. Community. People want to live in a community where they feel safe and connected to their neighbors. And one of the things that we are working on is building that connection. And civic engagement, the town square, so to speak. Culture. They love the events that are happening in the library and they want to see more. Science activities for children, art, and culture, performing arts. Number three, career. Anythink is committed to supporting innovation, entrepreneurship, startup businesses, small businesses, creativity, and supporting our teens and our kids and our adults as they're embarking on their careers and making decisions about how they're going to spend their life. We will know that the library is successful when our community says that they feel healthy, happy, safe, and smart. Here we are in 2018. Our library board has indicated, and we're exploring a 2018 ballot initiative that will increase our mill levy to be able to expand our capacity to serve our community because we are at capacity now. We have beautiful buildings. However, we cannot add one more book without having to take a book away. We don't have space for any additional materials. We're at capacity when it comes to children's coming to story hours. We are not able to be open the hours it would like to be to be able to serve more people. And we need more libraries. As you know, our community is growing exponentially. And in order to continue to serve our community in the way that they deserve, we're looking at building additional libraries. We have been in conversation with Oakwood Homes, and we're talking about the possibility of having a library, an Anythink library, as part of the reunion center. Our ballot initiative in 2018, should the board make that decision in August, we will be asking for an additional two mills, which would add, for a home valued at $325,000 assessed value, that would increase property taxes by $46. Any questions?
Any questions? Let's see, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I have noticed that the hours for the Anythink library are consistent with, let's see, the Wright Farm and the Huron Library. But in Commerce City, they're closed on Mondays. Tuesdays is 11:00 a.m. to 7:00, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Wednesday and Friday and Saturday, 9:30 to 5:30, where the other ones are from 9:30 to 8:30, Monday through Thursday. Is there any way of increasing our hours here in Commerce City and have it open on Monday to be consistent with the other libraries?
So, as you all are aware, when the recession hit, we had to take a hard look at how we were going to allocate resources. And one of the decisions that the board made was we would take our smaller libraries, which Commerce City is one of them, and we reduce the hours in order to maintain service throughout the district, not close any libraries, and not lay off any staff. The hours, and when we talked with our Commerce City community last year, that's one of the things they talked to us about is being open on Monday is something that is very important, and to be able to extend the hours during the school week especially, so that the kids, when they get out of school, that the library is able to be open more hours. So, that's actually one of the things that would be on the ballot initiative, so that we could open more hours, not only Commerce City, but some of our other libraries as well. So, you're absolutely right, and we would love to do it with additional resources.
If that ballot measure is not passed, I know that, you know, it's hard to pass a ballot measure now, especially since our tax rate and everything, property tax went up. Would there be any consideration of working with the city in the library? As far as having maybe some city land or so and working with the city?
I think that as a library district, we're very creative, and we would be happy to have conversations about how we'd be able to serve our community to expand our capacity.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Huesman? Do you have a comment? Any other comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you for your presentation, and should the board decide to put it on the ballot in August, and should the residents support it? Do you know what the timeline would be to getting a place built up in the reunion town center?
Right now, we're actually doing some pre-design work with two architectural firms. We'll be having community meetings throughout the summer, and so we're positioned to be able to begin actual design work. I would say first quarter 2019, and, you know, there are a lot of things that have to happen. Infrastructure, et cetera, et cetera, but we would be positioned to be doing the design work as the infrastructure is being worked on, should that decision be made.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Saying none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, we have the senior advisory council. I'd like to invite the committee members forward to give their presentation.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, my name is Derek Tripp, and I'm a recreation supervisor with Parks, Recreation &amp; Golf, and I'm here representing the senior advisory committee. Thank you for allowing us to come up and present in front of you again. Perfect. So, the senior advisory committee, again, is a group that advises and serves as an information source to senior participants. They communicate requests to Parks, Recreation, and Golf, and they assist with fundraising and provide outreach services. For us as staff, they're a group that represents the senior community. They bring back ideas from the public back to staff and just help us to really figure out what direction we want to go as a staff. So, there's three areas of the senior advisory committee, the outreach committee, program wellness committee, and the umbrella committee. There were 16 seats that were filled in 2018 after an extensive recruitment period in December of 2017. There are ideas that were created in 2017 from the focus group that took place in January. They took some ideas from that- They took some ideas from that focus group and created goals for us for 2018. So I'm going to ask George Maxi to come forward, and he's going to discuss some of the goals that we accomplished in 2017.
Good evening, George. Mr. Mayor, councilors, I am George Maxi. In that the senior advisors will speak to council only once this year, I will speak about the highlights of the year that was 2017. Seniors Got Talent Show, a rousing success for all involved. Christmas Meals for the Vulnerable. We delivered approximately 50 meals last year in our annual effort. Social Dancing, to enhance physical activity and social interaction. Involvement with youth to generate community-wide, intergenerational understanding. Coloring classes for those artistically inclined and as stress relief. Life Isn't Easy classes, twice a month, for discussions of social issues we all have to deal with. Senior Advisory Workshops, to discuss perceived needs and potential possibilities with presenters when appropriate. And also, probably in excess of 1,000 lesser activities and interactions that took place during the year. Thank you for your attention, and now may I introduce Jenny Lovridge.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jenny.
Good evening.
Evening.
So, good to be back again. And, good evening, councilors and mayor. My name is Jenny Lovridge, and I am speaking on behalf of the Program Wellness. And at this time, I would like to recognize our committee. It's Thelma Cole, Ollie Grimard, Joanne Hart, Carol Harville, Clara McKee, Mike Smith, he's not shown, Joanne Vale, Shirley Valentine, and myself. Staff is Zach Roth, and I would like to welcome our very new coordinator, Justin Layden. He will be coordinating both recreation centers. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to update you on our accomplishments we have done. And we did have our Pancake Breakfast. It was a hit like always. I would like to thank those of you who attended and those whom bought tickets. We understand that you are busy with all constructions and new growth in Commerce City. We are so excited for the new Recreation Bison Ridge opening up on May 25th. We also would look forward to the new programs and events that are going to be happening at the Bison Ridge and Eagle Point. Also excited for their renovations at Eagle Point. This will be quite exhilarating to see the two recreation centers combine a lot of the health wellness programs, like cooking classes, nutrition classes, also technology classes. A great new adventure for our community. We did have a nature hike on the 18th, which is always fun. We will be having a few more this year. Also, we will have our Seniors Got Talent Show, which combines with the youth. And the program is so much fun. Our Holiday Meal Programs is a big success. We are expanding the partnership with our local Commerce City restaurant, Mama's, to help us with their turkey dinners for our active adults whom are homebound. Thank you once again, as we move forward to our new adventures. And at this time, I would like to introduce Sandy Schmoller from Art Reach, Outreach. Hey.
Thank you. Good evening, Sandy.
Thank you very much for having us and for bringing the crowd in. Thank you so much. I have on the committee that I'm on Carol Boyd, Reba Drotar, George, Tilly Valareal, Linda Wolf, Frances Zacek, and Jody Hardy, and Derek Tripp from the staff. Outreach is exactly what it's called, what it is. We reach out into the community, educate them about what we do at the center. We support the staff in the programs that they bring up and that we have an input in. We also talk about marketing materials, some of the new things. Last year, we gave out lens cleaners, and we're going to change this around. We have new t-shirts this year. This is one of our new t-shirts. Some of them are wearing them. So, we'll be known when we are at some of the outreach programs. They'll know who we are, and we can tell them about what the programs are at both of the centers, but mostly the things that we do as seniors. We are really looking forward to working with the Bison Ridge community in hopes of getting them to participate in the seniors' center and our activities, to bring us all together as a community, not just two separate centers. The advantage there is that the seniors' center will stay where it is, and we hope to bring those people in for their input into what goes on in our community. We'd like to educate, I guess, more people to the Silver Sneakers Program, which, again, is a program for seniors, no cost to seniors, and a lot of programs for health and their wellness. We also participate in community events, such as the ACAN Conference, 17th District Law Day, Pancake Breakfast, the Neighborhood Outreach Events, and other local events. I'd like to introduce Rita. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Reba.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem, hi, council. Hello, Mr. City Manager. Nice to see you all, gentlemen. So, I'm here representing the Umbrella Committee. And on that committee is myself, Ollie Grimard, Carol Harville, Clara McKee, George Maxi, Joanne Vale, and our supervisor here is Derek Tripp, whom we really appreciate, by the way. And so, what is the purpose of the Umbrella Committee? And we're here to enhance communication between the Standing and Special Project Committees. We want to represent their Standing Committees during quarterly updates, assist staff in the creation of meeting agendas, and participate in communication with you, the city council, as well as outside organizations and departments. So, the priorities and goals of the Umbrella Committee are these. First goal is to continue to improve upon our mid-year senior advisory workshops and create more opportunities to work with outside groups, including youth advisory committees. Then we have the next one. We're bringing in representatives from community organizations to speak to the Umbrella Meeting, at the Umbrella Meetings, on a variety of topics to give the group a better understanding of what is going on in the community. We want to do a better job of communicating between the different committees and with the city and city council. So, our third goal is really a fun one, and we're really excited about this. It's working with the Bison Ridge and Eagle Point Recreation Centers. And the Umbrella Committee will continue to seek education regarding the construction and programming for the new recreation centers. And I just got my new little senior program brochure in the mail, and there's some really exciting things on there I think you guys will really be excited to see, too. There's technology classes, and there's some culinary classes. There's some really exciting trips and things like that. And we really want to make this a whole city. And you guys know me. I have always, from the beginning, since we annexed the north, I've always wanted this to be a one-city. And here we have the giant Rocky Mountain Arsenal, wonderful Rocky Mountain Arsenal Refuge in the middle of it. And it's my belief that this is going to happen with these two rec centers playing, getting people from the north coming to the south, and the people from the south coming to the north. And we will also suggest a tour to provide committee members more information and chances to ask questions and make suggestions. And I will say this, I have appreciated the committee that I'm on because staff really does listen, and there's a lot of dialogue. So, you can see our front page said, "Get More Out of Life." And I actually believe this is going to happen with the way that these senior programs are being changed to adult programming. And I think they're going to be very vibrant. So, I'd like to call up all of our previous presenters, as well as the very lovely ladies, Ms. Thelma Cole, Ms. Linda Wolf, sitting there. And do you have any questions for us? And I hope you do, because we waited a long time for our presentation, so we're ready to answer questions.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. We're glad that you're staying as involved as you are. I want to go to the council. It's like Mr. Diaz, do your button's on? Your lights on? Did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, since I somehow pushed it with my head. You guys mentioned that you are looking to create a marketing plan to, for the seniors' programs up in the Bison Ridge area. How successful has that been so far? What kind of outreach have you guys done?
Well, so, yes, we have a nice adult programming piece that we're doing, like Reba mentioned, with technology and cooking classes and filling that community space up that we have right now. And when we get out there taking more feedback and survey input, that's kind of our goal once we get into the center, is start trying to implement that there. And then, once new, our, the existing centers completed them, start pushing those programs back into the existing centers, so kind of making it kind of a workplace where everybody's getting that benefit.
Excellent. That sounds great, Reba. Now I know why you appreciate Derek. Wealth of information. And Mayor Protem Teeter wanted to know if he could participate in the seniors' Got Talent?
Exactly. What kind of talent are you going to bring to it?
I don't have...
I'd like to know.
I don't have talent.
I believe you're older than I am, so...
Maybe a couple of days.
I've been waiting to see what you're going to bring to the table.
Well, you'll find out in a year and seven months.
What?
Oh, I'll go ahead and talk now if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you for the presentation. I enjoyed it very much. Like I said, in a year and seven months, I'll be with you people, right along, side by side with you. And I will show you what kind of talent I have back then. Where is this Mama's Cafe, or whatever it is at?
Right across from the center.
It's right across from the center. It used to be the old K...
Oh.
K Restaurant?
It used to be JK's.
Oh, JK's. That's Mama's now, okay.
Yes, it is now.
Okay, change the name on me again, okay.
Apparently...
I'm glad to hear that. They're going to partner with us, yeah.
Yes, they're really good.
Well, again, thank you very much for your presentation. I know it's past most of yours bedtime, and soon to be mine, but so, thank you again.
All right, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, seniors, for bringing that presentation to us. I had a question for you from some seniors, is what's availability for transportation from our existing rec center to the new rec center?
So, we're also creating within some of our programming, we do have transportation with our vehicles, our 15-passenger vehicles that we have, we're creating some backing boards for some of our larger events right now, and some of the kind of larger programs we're offering, we do have that available. So, and we're going to continue to look at that sort of as we move forward and make sure we remove people back and forth.
Okay. I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm very excited about the new rec center, especially the community center. That's going to be a great place for the seniors to interact with the public as well, so looking forward to that. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much for everything you do. We appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, North Metro Smart Commute Pilot Bike Share Program. And they were here earlier and have decided to reschedule because of how late the evening was going, so they will be back in to present at another time. So, we're going to move on to the 2018 Garbage and Recycling Program, and turn it over to staff for that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. So, tonight, Tony Howard from Waste Management is here to provide you a little bit of an overview about our trash and recycling program. This is the third year of the program. You may recall during the Q1 update that Deputy City Manager Smith provided, we had about a 17.6% diversion rate. Our goal for 18... Yeah, this is 18. Our goal for 2018 is actually 18%. So, I'm going to let Tony talk a little bit more about the program, some of the things we're doing to get to that point, and also include in your packet is some of the information on our events. I'm not going to go through those today, but happy to answer any questions. Go ahead, Tony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to make this short. I'm not going to take you through the whole presentation. In your packet, I just want to pull out a few things. So, your 2017 diversion numbers are included in there. Commerce City recycled about 3,579 tons of recyclables in 2017. Of that amount, though, 998 tons were actually trash, and that equaled to about 27.9% of contamination. We would like to partner with you to bring that down to about 10%. And the reason for bringing that down is the recycling markets have changed drastically in the last five years. So, commodity rates are down about 45%. And, I mean, of course, all of you know that recyclables are commodities, and they're to be sold to an end user. Well, right now, that's really not happening. A lot of the commodities are sitting on docks. But the major reason for that is China has changed their policy in terms of what they will import from the United States in terms of recyclables. So, previously, the thresholds were about 5% contamination. As of right now, it's .5. So, just to give you an example, so .5% equals about 10 pounds of contamination. So, a contamination rate of about 27.9%, it's about 558 pounds. So, I mean, there's a big void, a big divide there. So, we definitely have to get those numbers down. And like I said, we would like to partner with you, as we've done in the past, to try to get those numbers down. And some of the things we've done in the past is community outreach. We're going to do the Touch a Truck event next month that we did last year. Community outreach at Pioneer Park, where I come out with the, my little table with the recycling education. Also, we do the yearly mailer. We'll continue to do that. And last year, we did a pilot program where we actually went out and kind of chose some areas in the city. areas in the city, looked into some cans, and then sent out mailers to residents who had contamination in their cans. And we actually saw a decrease in contamination. Not that we want to do a pilot program again, but we did see that engaging residents will definitely help bring down contamination. And so we have a number of resources available. Our recycle often recycle right website offers plenty of information, free flyers, stickers, pamphlets on what's recyclable and what's not. So our intent is to definitely clean the stream so we can actually sell those commodities and try to combat the issues that's going on in China. In a nutshell, that's really it. Do you guys have any questions?
Mr. Teeter.
Thank you for the presentation. You know, I, I, I'm really thankful we do have recycling. I really believe that is a big help to the city and the landfills. And I know it's just these people, that there's so many people in the home now, they're not getting the second can, that green can, to put their trash in, and they're putting it in the recycle bin.
Right.
So I'm glad that you are addressing those people in a way to try to talent, teach them or update them that that is recycle only and not trash. If there's any way, like I said, we can help there. I'm sure the city will be on board for that, so thank you very much.
Mr. Wardioloff.
Thank you. Have you reached out to the schools? You know, I know a lot of our students have asked about recycling options. And sometimes in the core city, I'm an educator and the kids actually educate the parents on what you could recycle and you can't recycle. So I mean, that's, that's a good place to start, to get the kids involved that will educate, like Rick said, the parents of what you can and what you cannot.
That is very true. When I do the events out at the parks, it's usually the kids who get my quiz correct and not the parents. So yes, we've talked about that before with some of the schools. We don't contract with all of the schools here, so that is something we have to work out. The schools where we actually contract with, we can certainly put together a presentation and, and teach the kids, basically.
And I know they have different events that you guys might want to be present at. I know the high school I work at, we have open house, we have a fall office, we have a spring fling, and we just invite all these partners from the community. That would be a perfect event to, just looking at your presentation, bringing out your table, just to get more outreach out there.
Definitely. And something else I'd like to bring up too, we're putting together a webinar. And I like to invite all of you to participate, you know, just log in and listen. And it will give you a lot of information on what's going on with the recycling market and what's going on in China. And you're always welcome, open invitation to come down to the Murph and just see how it works. We can definitely give you a tour.
Mr. Diaz.
Thank you for hanging out with us tonight, Tony. You know, God kind of late. I will say that I thankfully have my wife who's in my ear all the time in terms of what goes in the recycling bin and what does not, specifically when it comes to pizza boxes. And I feel weird asking you this because I know you're not at my house or anything, but is there like a sticker on my recycling bin right now that tells me what I can recycle and what I can't recycle? Just because sometimes I get those mailers and I just flat out ignore them. I apologize. But if there was something wrong on my recycling bin and I'm not picturing it right now, I don't know if you guys provide that for residents in Commerce City.
I can't say that all of them have those types of stickers. I know some of them do.
Okay, okay. And then the other question that I will ask, and I don't know if this goes to you, Tony, but Michelle on the telephone town hall that we got the other night, someone asked, I know we still have our contract with Waste Management for a couple more years or whatever it is, but someone did ask if it was possible for us to have a third day of green recycling, green waste, yard waste. So is that a possibility to expand until the contract is up? Or is that one of those things, just because we got that question at the town hall?
That's a great question. So the other presentation in your packet talks about the number of events we do. So one of the things that we can add to the budget, because we do pay for those events, is consideration for you to look at adding additional events. So we can do that for 2019.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks, Michelle, thanks, Tony.
Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Tony, for his presentation. Me and her asked to answer his questions. You know, everybody has to eat. And have you ever looked at, at going to some of these grocery stores and setting a table up and demonstrating or showing different products that they purchase on a daily basis that are recyclable? Because I think people, you know, they need to see things that they can recycle. And I think people don't realize most of the products that are packaged at these grocery stores are recyclable. And the fact about having glass, spaghetti, whatever, washing those out, because that's a contamination as well. I know a source that we use, working in the grocery industry, we do cardboard recycling. If we have any soiled cardboard, that, that stack of cardboard gets thrown out and it's not acceptable if it's soiled. So some education on that part would be great. And I could work with you with that for the keen supers here in Commerce City. I do know when it comes to the landfills and as far as the green waste events, I think it's also scheduling too. That's part of the problem, because people hear about it and then when it actually happens, they're like, oh, I missed it. So maybe changing those dates so later in the spring, not so early, and then in the fall, maybe later, not so early. That way people, and then of course, city and everything, website, educate people, let them know that we do have two free green waste and two free landfills as well. Because that's an opportunity, you know, then we have partners too. We have the, what, electrical recyclables. And then I had a question about CFL bulbs, or incandescent bulbs. Where can you recycle those? Because that's, that's a question people ask me all the time.
We do have a program where you can potentially recycle those. Through Waste Management. It depends on how many you want to recycle.
Yeah.
You can actually order boxes in which the boxes are delivered to you, you put the bulbs in-
Really?
Ship them out and they're taken care of.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
And Councilman Douglas, I'll share that feedback with Public Works staff and we can, in terms of scheduling timeframes and look at the fall events and see what we can do for the rest of the year.
All right. Because I'm all for a third, but if it's all around scheduling and notification, if we could do that, that part would be a lot less than adding another day.
We'll provide options, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I got a couple of things, and some of the others have already mentioned it, but I watch on my street, especially where there's a lot of people living in one home, they only have one trash can tote. And they fill their recycling bin over full, the lid won't close, and of course, all the trash gets in my yard because I live at the end of the cul-de-sac, blows in there. And half the stuff they put in there is not recyclables. So I know part of that contamination is because of not enough space for the trash, the garbage. And they utilize those yellow-lidded recycle bins to offset how much garbage they end up putting out, which is, goes against the program. To Councilman Diaz's question about the labeling, my wife has insisted we have two cans in our kitchen. And one of the cans she took and cut out the postcard that shows from Waste Management what are recyclables and what aren't. And I've been going through a training class with my wife because it seems like every time I take the recyclables out, I have to go through it. And then she gets upset why I'm taking stuff out, because the list says cardboard. But the pizza box-
Lid.
She said is cardboard, that's why I put it in there. I said, wait a minute. She goes, I said, you can't do that. She goes, well, it doesn't have any pizza in it, now it's just a box. Oh, but it has pieces of cheese or whatever and oils. And so trying to get that refined, because I know her heart's in it and wants to be more savvy to recycling and protecting the environment. The downside to it is she doesn't quite understand that everything's not recyclable. And she looks and on bottles and stuff, it has that little logo, whether it's recyclable or not. And I'm telling you, I don't care if you put that on the side of a TV, it would be in the bin and I would have to take it out. So I do believe it's an educational piece. I'm glad you came in tonight and gave us those statistics so I can go home and tell my wife about the contamination of the recyclables. And maybe try to strengthen my points, I don't have to sort the trash much more. But it is important and I think it goes down to the education piece. I do believe that we need to try to have more, more opportunity for getting rid of green waste. I know the council's considered that over the last couple of years, trying to, trying to find organic places for organic opportunities and composting opportunities and things of that nature. But we have a, now our newer areas of Commerce City are starting to have more adult trees and shrubs and things of that nature. And ornamental grasses and everybody's got to cut those at a certain time of the year. And then all of a sudden, they're struggling with, hey, I've got a ton of limbs, I've got this. And, you know, whether they trimmed them just before or just after an event, then they start freaking out because now they don't, they, there's nowhere to take it. And, and we don't want to landfill it if we don't, if we don't have to. If we can compost it or recycle it, I think is the best for our environment. So the education piece is key. We look forward to seeing you at the outreaches and at the Touch a Truck event. I'm glad that you're participating. So thank you very much. And Mr. Teeter has one more comment. Mr. Teeter.
I, I see this thing on here about the tires. I'd like to have more information about the tires, what we're going to do with that in September.
So that's going to be a new recycling event that we're partnering with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment on, and I'll provide you some additional information.
See if they can take the light bulbs at the tire event.
We also did post on our social media page, the electronics recycling event that's coming up, so we'll, we'll see what we can do.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a presentation on park trails updates. I'd like to invite the city staff forward to give that update to the city council.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Brown. I'm the Parks Planning and Operations Manager for the city. Also with me this evening is Tracy Ferguson, our Parks Planner. And we're going to tag team this presentation. Tracy will be, because it's primarily comprised of maps, Tracy will be using the cursor to sort of give you some directions as I give the presentation. So with recent weeks, city council requested an update or a presentation on trails, so we're here this evening and happy to do that. I know it's late, so I will, I will try to keep it brief and allow for a question period because I anticipate there might be a few. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. First thing is just a mention of what's, it's called the Prairie Ways Action Plan. That was a master plan that was adopted by city council back in 1999. And it essentially set forth the master plan for parks, trails, and open space amenities in the northern range or northern part of the city. Within that plan, it speaks specifically to several types of trails. And there, if you see there on the right side of the slide on your presentation, we have neighborhood trails that connect park and school sites from one, from one neighborhood to the next. We also have multi-use paths or multi-use roadside paths, which you're probably familiar with. You've seen probably on the north side of 104th Avenue. It's a 12-foot wide detached walk. It's also now on Tower Road. We also have portions that have been built on Chambers Road. So those, those exist in several areas up there. And they're generally put in when the roads are widened and the road infrastructure is put in. Putting them in ahead of time, unfortunately, often they would become sacrificial, which is very expensive. And then lastly, we have open space trails, which primarily you would see in First Creek, Second Creek, and Third Creek, or in the, more in those floodplain or open space type areas, and those are soft surface trails. So with that, let's talk a little bit about what existing trails there are in the northern range. So first, let's talk about the Second Creek Trail. It's, it's the dark brown lines there, and Tracy will highlight that for you. She's trying to highlight that for you. So if you can find, oh, no, that's not it. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, there we go. Yeah, okay. We just a pointer. Yeah. Okay, so, so let's start with the Second Creek Trail. It's the dark brown here, and it's essentially between 96th Avenue and about 108th Avenue, just east of Chambers Road. And it exists within the Second Creek Floodplain. And it connects to the South Lawn neighborhood, it connects to the Frontera neighborhood, it connects to the Buffalo Mesa neighborhood. So we have a loop in the southern portion and one in the northern portion. This was built, I believe, in around 2007 or 2008. I'm sorry, I don't have the exact date. But this would be an example of an open space trail. And again, this is within the Second Creek Corridor. The next trail I would point out to you is the Perimeter Trail around the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. And that actually goes from, you can't see it here, it's just on the bottom of the map, from 81st Avenue along the Buckley Alignment, all the way across the alignment of 96th Avenue from Buckley to Highway 2. And then it would continue down Highway 2 all the way to Quebec Street, and then down Quebec Street all the way to 64th Avenue and to the open space that's just north here of the Civic Center. That is also the entrance to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. That's a soft surface trail. The last one I would point out is the multi-use pass. And again, those within the Prairie Ways Action Plan are planned along all major arterial roadways. And again, those are 12-foot wide detached hard surface trails. And again, they're built primarily when the roads are put in. And they're also contained within this, in the cross-sections, the city's cross-sections for roadways. So they're not only in the Prairie Ways Action Plan, but they're also in the transportation plan and the city's road cross-section. So as you can see, there's a good number of those built out. It's the entire length of 104th Avenue from Tower all the way to Highway 85. We also have a significant segment from, on Chambers Road from 96th Avenue all the way to 120th Avenue. And then there are some other smaller segments along 96th Avenue, but unfortunately, we have a break there between Eagle Creek and Frontera. But again, the road, the road section hasn't been widened there. So we're starting to fill those pieces in and that arterial road network really creates the network within the entire northern range to get folks around. And again, those are detached, they're 12-foot wide, rollerskaters, bikers, joggers, walkers, they're really for everyone. Again, we've got a ways to go, but those will provide a good portion of our trail network as the roads continue to develop. And then along with the open space trails, again, those are just additions too and add to it. We'll go ahead and Trace. So our next phase of planning and our next segments of trail that we intend to build are really, have been focused primarily on a couple of things. The first thing being that we now have the Bison Ridge Recreation Center at 112th and Potomac Street. When we first started our next phase of trail planning, the recreation center, 2K had not passed, there was not a site identified at that time. So we've had to go back and do a little bit of work to try to make sure that we can try to connect folks to the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. We've also have the intent to try to create a loop trail in the northern range. Most folks who use trails generally like to have a loop that they can start out in one place, go out for a distance, and then end up at the same place rather than going out and coming back on the, on the same route. So again, we're hoping to create a loop trail with 104th Avenue on the south side, the Second Creek Corridor, and then also the O'Brien Canal, or potentially the new Highway 2 trail segment that has gone in. Between those four segments, we can create that northern range loop trail. And then again, so the goal there with that loop trail is to connect as many folks as possible to the Bison Recreation Center as well as connect them to that loop. If you can get to that loop, you should be able to get to the Bison Recreation Center. And then again, trying to create neighborhood connections from every subdivision to get you to that loop trail. And so the last, lastly, the thing I would, I would mention, and this is important, is that unfortunately, when you're using, well, when you have- And so the last, lastly, the thing I would, I would mention, and this is important, is that unfortunately, when you're using, well, when you have highways and you have canals and you have rivers and you have railroads, you can't always take the most direct route with a trail. Oftentimes, a trail, while it will get you where you want to go, isn't necessarily the most direct path. So it's something to keep in mind as we continue to plan trails and as I go through the presentation. Okay, so now let's talk a little bit about those connections that I was talking about. So if you see the bright yellow, those are contemplated, the solid bright yellow are contemplated new segments of trail. And you can see actually, if you start down at the corner essentially of 96th Avenue and 104th Avenue, just west of that is the O'Brien Canal. And that, it's sort of the squiggly line that continues north there, ends up just north of the recreation center up there where 76th and Highway 2 come together. And then it, it essentially winds down there near 112th Avenue, and then it again heads north and up into the Outlook Neighborhood, if you're familiar with that, at 120th and Chambers. And then actually, eventually, that will go all the way to Bar Lake State Park. And the intent would be to have that trail that folks could actually hop on, take it, and it would take them right into Bar Lake State Park. Again, we have to work with the city of Brighton on that at, once we get past Laredo there, it's, it's out of city boundaries. So again, that would be a segment that Brighton would be responsible for, but we would work closely with them. And timing on that, we're, at this point, we, we don't really have a window, but again, that would be the intent. But we would, at a minimum, be able to connect those folks that are in the Outlook subdivision, get them under 120th Avenue, it is a subgrade crossing, and get them down along the O'Brien Canal and to the new recreation center. You can also see the segment that starts at Chambers, or just east of Chambers, where that open space trail in the Second Creek Corridor ends there. So just a little bit north and east of Chambers and 104th Avenue there, we have another segment within the Second Creek Corridor, essentially between 104th and 112th, that we would need to complete. And then lastly, you'll see the dotted yellow line that is just about, begins just above 104th Avenue and just east of Peoria Street. And that goes up into the River Oaks subdivision, right adjacent to the River Run subdivision. And then it's along the Burlington Canal. And the dotted lines here that you see north of 112th Avenue are actually going through the city of Brighton and through the Fuller Estates subdivision there. And so we would, we would work to try to do that, the reason being is that creates the most direct route for those folks on the west side of Highway 2 and Highway 76, primarily in the River Run area and the River Oaks area. That's the most direct connection to the recreation center and to get them within that bigger loop trail. It would also come down, it goes under 70, it goes under Highway 76 just north of 104th Avenue. And then it would meet up with that multi-use path on the north side of 104th Avenue. So again, tho, those are the new contemplated segments of trail, again, to create this bigger loop and connect all those neighborhoods or subdivisions to that loop, which then again, will help get them to the recreation center. There are a few things currently that are, that have created some challenges in our planning. The first one is the Burlington Canal segment there, which is the dotted yellow line. Particularly the portion that goes through the Fuller Estates or the, the portion that's in Brighton. We have reached out to those folks at this point and let them know that we're preliminarily planning a trail. And at, at this point, we still, we're still waiting for responses, but at, at this point, responses have not been positive. The canal in that particular area is only dedicated by easement rather than ownership. So Freco or the Farmers Reservoir Irrigation Company has limited control over, over that easement, except for their use and their ability to grant us a use on top of the existing easement may be limited at this point. We still have to do some more research with the city attorney and Freco on that. But unfortunately, at this point, the neighbors are not, let's just say they haven't endorsed it heavily at this point. The good news, the good news is, is that there are other routes that we can take. Again, like I mentioned earlier, sometimes they're just not the most direct route. So rather than taking that northern route, if you start at 112th and Peoria Street, you could catch the dotted green line that you see now, this would be essentially the alternate route. You could, you could go south behind river, you could go behind the River Oaks subdivision along the, just, it's going to be just west and north of 76. There is a subgrade crossing under 76 that was put there many years ago for farmers to get, to get equipment from one side of the highway to the other on, on some of those parcels that were broken up when the highway was built. So we would work with CDOT, we've had preliminary discussions with them to get folks there. And then they would just take the Burlington down to 104th Avenue there, which would then again, get them on that, on that multi-use path on the north side of 104th Avenue. They could then, once they hit Highway 2, take the brand-new detached multi-use path that's on the east side of Highway 2, that I'm sure you've seen at this point, take it right up to 112th Avenue and then shoot right over there to the recreation center at 112th and Potomac. The other challenging, Tracy, if you go back to the other slide. So the other, the other area that's creating a challenge currently, and when I say challenge, it's just that there are some other things that need to occur before we can finalize our planning. So the segment of the Second Creek Trail between where it currently ends, they're just north and east of 104th Avenue and Chambers, and its connection up to 112th Avenue, they're just to the, just a little bit east and south of the recreation center. Currently, that, that piece of land is within the Reunion Oakwood Homes PUD. However, it's still currently owned by Full &amp; Wider, it hasn't been taken down by Oakwood at that time. And the city is working right now with, with Oakwood on, I think, submittals for that particular, for the particular piece of land, as well as the infrastructure for the drainage, that I believe most of you are probably familiar with. The drainage infrastructure that needs to go under 112th Avenue for Second Creek, as well as the, the full build-out of 112th Avenue from the recreation center to Chambers. Until we have a little more detail on exactly what that's going to look like and what the timing is, that's going to drive the timing and the development of that particular trail segment. Good news is, we'll go back to the slide, there's an alternate route to get folks up to the recreation center. If you can get to 104th Avenue, which, which the Second Creek Trail gets most of the neighborhoods to, from the e, on the east side of Potomac Street, then the Second Creek Trail will get most folks to 104th Avenue. If you can get to 104th Avenue, you can get to Potomac Street. There is currently either multi-use path or sidewalk or a bike lane all along 112th, or excuse me, all along Potomac, currently from 104th all the way up to the new recreation center. So we do have some alternate routes in the, in the meantime, until we're able to further plan that Second Creek segment of trail and/or if we're successful or not in getting that Burlington Canal Trail through the Fuller Estates area. So timelines, currently, the completion and the, for the planning and the design of the O'Brien Canal segments is anticipated to occur the fall of 2018. Those remaining segments, again, 112th Avenue, construction as well as the Second Creek Drainage Improvements and ownership transfer from Full &amp; Wider to, to Oakwood Homes will drive that particular segment. I would note though, that the Tower Road and associate, the associated multi-use path along Tower Road has been completed, as well as the one on the east side of Highway 2, that's been completed. And again, of course, we have it on the north side of 104th Avenue from Highway 85 to Tower Road. So again, things are coming and they're getting completed, but it, it takes time. And, and of course, when development occurs, the roads widen, and then those multi-use paths, again, making up the vast majority of the network, will continue to be completed as, as roads are built. So next, let's talk about FLAP, or the Federal Lands Access Program, which, again, it's a federal program, it's intended to increase access to federal lands. So we're working currently with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service at the Rocky Mountain National, National Wildlife Refuge, as well as with the city of Denver and Adams County on a, on a grant and on some improvements related to improving access to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge for our residents, as well as others in Adams County and Denver. And the construction of those particular, which I will go over here in a, in a moment. The construction of those particular improvements is likely to occur in 2019. Those are largely being planned and oversaw by, by the federal government, but we're working cooperatively with them. So the, the particular improvements will be to modify the existing trail that leads up to the refuge entrance, which is here right off of the, again, the open space just north of the Civic Center. And again, they, they will be creating a, a new archway and a more grand entrance into the arsenal there, so there'll be some modifications to the trail. And then two new pedestrian, and these are pedestrian-only entrances to the refuge in the northeast corner of the, of the Arsenal Wildlife Refuge at 96th and Chambers, as well as 96th and Buckley. And again, I will have a map on those here in just a moment. And then also trail connections from new en, those new entrances to an overlook that would exist on what's called Henderson Hill, which is, which is that large hill on 96th Avenue, just a little bit west of Chambers. And if you've ever been up there, been on the trail on 96th Avenue, there is quite an overlook from there to the city of Denver and, and the mountain range. So as you can see here up in the northern, northwest corner, the fence would actually be realigned along that dotted yellow line, or I should say, an additional fence would be put in. But openings in the existing perimeter fence would exist, and the blue lines would represent that additional trail. And then the purple line up there along 96th Avenue would indicate where that trail going to the Henderson Hill overlook would be. And then if you come down to the, would, would be the lower left-hand corner of the slide where number five and number one is, you would, that would be the entrance into the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge through the Prairie Gateway Open Space again, which is just north of the Civic Center here. So again, those, those are planned to occur in 2019, and we're continuing to work with Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge, as well as our other partners, to finalize the plans for those. Funding for these, for these projects, there was an account set up in 2015 for the northern range loop trail. The, and again, that, that's, that's a fund and a CIP project that was approved by council in 2015, where all of these, these future improvements anticipate funding or being funded from. I would note also that the Second Creek Pedestrian Bridge that actually connects the Buckley Ranch subdivision to Stewart Middle School or gets them across Second Creek was completed just about a month or so ago. And I believe there will be some information coming out soon about, from Communications Division about a ribbon-cutting ceremony for that particular bridge. That's one where the kids sort of built their own makeshift bridge in the, in the creek with, with plywood and, and pallets and so forth. So we, we went ahead and built them a, a proper bridge to get over the canal. And then last, I would note, approximately 2 million remains in this, again, previously approved account for all those aforementioned projects. So our understanding, the request from council was also to provide some information about connectivity for our residents, our residents to other surrounding trail networks, particularly Denver's trail networks and perhaps Stapleton. So Tracy, if we, if we could start along 104th Avenue. So probably as most of you know, the, the most prolific trail within the metro Denver area is the South Platte River Trail. And it, you know, it goes as far south as Chatfield State Park, and it goes all the way now, all the way north to the Adams County Regional Park. So if you can get to the South Platte River Trail, you can connect yourself to a large variety of trail network within the metro Denver area. So currently, we again have 104th Avenue, the north side of 104th Avenue, we have that detached 12-foot wide trail or multi-use path that goes from Tower all the way to 85. Unfortunately, that's as close as we can get you on that, on that path at this point, because 104th Avenue from 85 west to the South Platte River has not been widened yet or has not been improved. It would be our intent to continue with that, with that multi-use path on the north side as that road develops. My understanding is, is that, that needs, it's going to be a cooperative effort with Adams County and the city of Thornton, as well as Commerce City. So I do not have any current information on timing for that. But that is really your best connection from the northern range, if you want to get to the South Platte River Trail, which you can then take south and connect yourself into the Denver metro area. I, I would mention, there is a trailhead there though at 104th Avenue and, and the South Platte River. And it, it's not uncommon for people to, you know, you throw the bike on your car and you drive to a trailhead, and then, and then you hop on the trail at that point, when there isn't a good, safe connection that you can get to via trailer road. So again, not uncommon for folks to do that, and it may be something that has to be done in the interim. So as far as connections to the south, the next best, best connection for our residents is the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, which is at the southern part of the city, right, runs right along approximately the 56th Avenue Corridor. And if you can get to that, it will connect you to also the South Platte River Trail, as well as the High Line Canal Trail out in southeast Aurora. If you were to actually take it east, the Sand Creek Regional Greenway Trail goes through Stapleton, goes through Aurora, and would connect you to the High Line Canal Trail. If you were to get on the Sand Creek Trail, you could then get on the High Line Canal Trail, which would take you to the Cherry Creek Trail, which would then take you back to the South Platte River Trail. So you could actually do like a 50-mile loop in the southern part of the city by utilizing the Sand Creek Regional Greenway. So let's talk quickly about how you get to that though, because it, it's not easy, but, but, but there are connections that exist. So if you were to come down Highway 2 or come along Quebec Street and get to the open space just north of the Civic Center here, we have a trail that, that goes around that particular site. And we also, and you, you would take that essentially to what is now the new Central Park Boulevard, which currently will have a multi-use path trail on the east side. Only portions of it are built at, at this point, there's still some segments that need to be built. But it would, but the trail on the open space here that comes, again, you come down Highway 2, you come down Quebec via our trail, you get to the open space, and you get to the far east section of the Central Park Boulevard. That trail will be fully developed or multi-use path all the way to, it would cross at grade though, but it would cross 56th Avenue and then connect you just a little bit further south into the Stapleton Trail Network, which then Tracy would go along Prairie Metals Parkway there to the west, continue to the west. And then you come down Spruce Street. And then it actually gets you to the, you may have seen that little open space area that's just behind Dick's Sporting, or sorry, not Dick's Sporting Goods Park, but actually Bass Pro and Target and, and the, in the Northfield Development there. There's also a trail there that will actually get you to a, to a pedestrian bridge or crossing that was, is just specifically for pets and bikes over the Sand Creek region, or over the Sand Creek, right adjacent to Quebec Street, which then gets you to the Sand Creek. And once you get to the Sand Creek, again, you can take that east or you can take it west to get you to the South Platte River. So those are the two primary ways that our residents can connect to the bigger trail network. Again, as segments build out, it will, it will get easier, but currently, they do exist. And we actually, surprisingly, we have quite a few folks that do it. And I've already seen pretty good use along the new Highway 2 Trail. So with that, I would conclude and happy to be, or happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Does the council have any questions for Mike at this time? Mr. Teeter?
Thanks for the presentation, Mike. I know it's a little off-color here, but we know what the gates are going to be on the arsenal, getting in and out. Is that going to be turnstile? What's that going to be to keep the wildlife in and the?
So Tracy, if you go back to the slide. I don't know exactly what the gates will be like. I do know an additional fence will be put up though to separate the wildlife and the existing perimeter fence. So Tracy, if you can show the existing perimeter fence up there in the north corner. I'm sorry, so you can't, yeah. Yeah, that's fine. Well, yeah, go ahead and use the cursor. So if you can point out the existing, in the northeast corner there, yeah. So, yeah, so there, there's the existing perimeter fence around. And then there would be an opening put in that, but you can see the, do you see the other gray line there? That's an additional fence that would be put up to keep wildlife in. So folks would essentially be able to access that area between the perimeter fence and the new fence, but the new fence would keep the wildlife in. I don't know exactly what the, what the gates are, are going to be at this point, Tracy. I don't know if those details are known at this point or not.
They're, they are pedestrian gates, but they still keep the wildlife where they're supposed to be. And the, the trailheads will have cattle guards to keep the wildlife.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate the presentation. Is there any talk of doing a hard path? Because right now it's crusher, crusher fine, going down 96, going from Chambers 96 all the way down, well, to Highway 2. Is there any talk of making that a, a second path, that's a hard path?
So currently, we do have the, the soft surface path on the south side, which is part of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge Perimeter Trail. That, that would remain soft surface. On the north side, along Frontera, the Frontera subdivision and along the Eagle Creek subdivision, we do have the mul, the hard surface multi-use path that's been built there because the road was widened there when those developments went in. So unfortunately, we, the, the short answer is yes, at some point, there will be that hard surface trail there. But it has to occur when the rest, when development occurs and the rest of the road widens. Again, specific timing for that, I, I don't have that. But again, as the development goes in, the road widens, and that's, that's when those are typically put in. If you, if you put them in ahead of time, not knowing the road profiles, they end up unfortunately, in all likelihood, being sacrificial. And hearts, unfortunately, concrete isn't cheap these days.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you, Mike, for the presentation, and Tracy?
I would mention, if, if you're interested in the Prairie Ways Action Plan, you can find it on the city's website. It has a significant It has significantly more information about trails, parks, open space in the northern range.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is administrative council business. We do have one item on there to start with, would be a discussion about a donation to this Steve Hogan, mayor of Aurora, who just passed away, to make a donation. In front of you, you should have a document about the loss of Mayor Hogan. And there are four different ways that we can donate, or we can do multiple donations, however the council decides. Ones to a memorial fund, ones to the Aurora Korean War Memorial Fund, ones to the Aurora History Museum, and ones to University of Denver Stephen D. Hogan Scholarship Fund. So, I'm looking to the council for their desires of how they would like to, or if they would like to, donate to a memorial fund for the loss of Mayor Hogan. Mr. Huesman. No? Anyone else? Anybody have a suggestion? Mr. Teeter.
Well, out of the four, I think I would like the University of Denver's Stephen D. Hogan Scholarship Fund.
Okay. Any recommendation on how much you would like to donate?
Leave that up to staff. What do you think that would be appropriate?
This is not a typical situation. When other folks have passed away, we would typically do flowers on behalf of the city council, which would probably be a hundred dollars or less. Because Mayor Hogan was a more significant public figure, it probably warrants a larger donation instead, but we really don't have any history that we can draw on for this sort of thing.
All right, so I'm going to go to other council members, see if we can get a, a place that is good for the council. Anyone else have any suggestions? Mr. Huesman.
Thank you. I concur with the idea of donating to the Stephen D. Hogan Scholarship Fund at the University of Denver, because that does help to brighten tomorrow's future. I think that a donation in the amount of five hundred to a thousand dollars would be sufficient. Although he was the mayor of Aurora, he also did serve on the E-470 board with their own councilman Douglas, and they were instrumental in getting our towered road to Pena interchange done. So, I think that it would be befitting of us to donate on his behalf in thanks of the hard work that he did as a member of that board, and making sure that that project came to fruition.
Mr. Douglas.
Is that a proposal? Second that.
Well, we're kind of in between still, Steve. We're five hundred to a thousand dollars, and right now, the suggestion is for the scholarship fund.
I, I agree, five hundred dollars to the Denver University, University of Denver.
Okay. Anyone else with a suggestion? I also agree with you, Mr. Douglas, and Mr. Huesman, and, and Mr. Teeter. Scholarship fund is fine with me, and I have a suggestion for five hundred to a thousand, and also a suggestion for five hundred. I'll look for any motions that anybody would like to make at this time. Mr. Huesman.
I'd like to move that we donate five hundred dollars to the University of Denver Stephen D. Hogan Scholarship Fund in memory of Aurora Mayor Stephen Hogan.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We have a couple others here in front of us. Spaceport Draft Programmatic Environmental Assessment and Spaceport Facility License. We've been asked to do another letter of support. I need to ask for council's approval for a signature on that letter. Mr. Huesman.
Make a motion that council approve your signature on a letter in support of the Spaceport Colorado program out at the Front Range Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for that authorization. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, I have a letter asking the governor to veto Senate Bill Eighteen dash two oh three as per the legislative discussion last Monday. I need authorization to sign that letter as well, if that's the council's desire. It has to do with the court affecting the courts. Mr. Huesman.
Per recommendation of our municipal judge, I recommend that we seek to have Senate Bill Eighteen dash two oh three vetoed, and make a motion that we approve your signature to go on a letter to the Honorable Governor of Colorado, John Hickenlooper, requesting that veto.
Thank you, Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we have a sponsorship funding request. This is, Paulo Diaz is the request.
Sure, I'll talk about it. Yes, thank you, City Manager McBroom, for preparing this, especially since I just gave it to you this morning. As I mentioned to city council at last week's study session, the Twenty-Seven J. Education Foundation is having us there, celebrate the future luncheon on Wednesday, June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, eleven thirty a.m. If I recall correctly, it's at the Armory. Yep, it's at the Armory. I sit on the Education Foundation, so I know this is one of our events. We are actually recognizing some scholarship award winners in the Twenty-Seven J. School District. I actually believe that there are Prairie View High School kids who are recipients as well. So, the sponsorships that they're looking at is on page two, what you're looking at of the document that you guys were given. I wouldn't recommend going above a silver sponsor, so even a silver and a bronze, just really depending on how many city council members or staff are willing and able to attend. I do know that we already support their golf tournaments later in the fall. We hold that at Buffalo Run, but this is definitely a different event, and the funds go to the scholarship fund.
I want to first appreciate your efforts on the foundation, and I know we need to be an integral part of the educational sources within our community and support those sources. So, I, I am supportive of doing this. All I would ask is, noticing on the, the first page, that we have a sponsorship budget amount of fifteen thousand one hundred, and the balance is a negative four thousand one forty, that if council supports the request at the silver sponsor level, that we also have staff make sure that we bring this up during the budget retreat to adjust the sponsorship budget amount moving forward if we intend to sponsor the, the school districts at the level that we're sponsoring them at, so that we can keep our budget as square as possible. With that said, Mr. Huesman.
Given that this event takes place at eleven thirty in the morning on a Wednesday afternoon, when a lot of people will be previously occupied, I think that going for eight tickets may not be the best avenue. So, I make a motion that we support the Twenty-Seven J. Education Foundation at a bronze level sponsorship, which will garner four tickets for available council members, mayor, mayor pro tem to attend.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Mr. Teeter.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second for bronze sponsorship in the amount of five hundred dollars for the Twenty-Seven J. Foundation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Now, I'm opening it up for any additional administrative council business to come before the city council at this time. Mr. Huesman.
Thank you. I have two motions that I'd like to make. The first motion I would like to make is to direct the city attorney and staff to prepare an ordinance for a six-month moratorium on drilling and extraction operations in Commerce City for presentation at the June fourth city council meeting for discussion and consideration.
Mr. Douglas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to direct the staff, let me make sure I get it right, to prepare an ordinance for a six-month moratorium on oil and gas. What else did you add to that, Mr. Huesman? To do what?
For discussion on the June fourth agenda.
For discussion on June fourth.
I think we would place the ordinance on the agenda for action, and of course, that allows some discussion of whether you would like to adopt it or not.
All right, so we're not voting on a moratorium, we are asking the staff to have a discussion on June fourth.
Essentially, we'd be putting the moratorium ordinance on the June fourth agenda.
Yes, an ordinance would be drafted and put in the packet, and it would be just like any other ordinance on first reading, there would be a, a public hearing on that, on that evening, followed by discussion.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, I'm open to the discussion, but I need to have a, a reason. So, I'm looking forward to a study session discussion to identify the need, the, the reason for the moratorium.
Scheduling-wise, the June fourth meeting will occur before the next study session, so.
Yeah, because we don't have one physical memorial day. Then I'll have to have someone give me some identifying reasons to have a moratorium. All right, motion is carried. Any other administrative council business come before the council at this time? Mr. Huesman.
I would like to make a motion that city council approve the city of Commerce City joining the amicus brief with the fourteen other communities that have done so in the Martinez lawsuit.
Is there a second? Mr. Diaz.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to join the amicus brief on the Martinez case. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
How many nays? Okay, motion is carried. Any other administrative council business come before the city council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into reports. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute for the last time on a Monday, the city manager update. We have a number of updates, including an update on the future distribution of the city manager update. I think the request was initially brought up by Councilman Guardiola with support from other council. You'll, you'll start to see that in the middle of the week, beginning next week. I'm sorry, the week after next. We also have an updated Adams County Youth Initiative, Quality Community Foundation Scholarship recipients, some additional information requested by Mr. Douglas on rapid flashing pedestrian beacon, which is, which is what the, the ladies here this evening were requesting on Chambers at a hundredth. Some information on a recent case study regarding the Rocky Mountain Arsenal that we thought might be of interest to you, and some additional information on the oil and gas update. So, please reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sheasley.
I have nothing additional this evening.
I'll start off my report, and then I'll allow anybody else to add anything if they'd like to. I did attend the open house. It's supposed to be the grand opening open house at a Good Shop Auto Body. However, they had been open for a year, but they were just getting around to doing a ribbon cutting. It's right across from L. Hardin's there, the old, big, old tire. Looks like they're getting their business ramped up. They have a secondary business in North Glen, and seems like a pretty decent shop, and would recommend people to stop by and at least welcome them to the community. Had the ACC meeting, myself and Mr. Teeter were there, Rotary. And then there was a tour of Bison Ridge Rec Center. Most of the council made it to that, I did not. There was a telephone town hall, most of the council made it to that, and I did, I did attend the telephone town hall. And then there was the Bison Ridge Stakeholder Event that happened last week. I want to thank the staff, I think they did a, a great job on the rec center. I can't wait till the, the public gets to see it. We had the opportunity to go in and try out some different things, and got a chance to swim and try out the slide, and most, it seemed like most of the families that were there were very appreciative and excited about the opening of this new rec center. So, thank you to all the staff and the council that worked very hard on it, and thank you to the public for passing the two K. initiative to allow us to build that for them. That will end my reports. If anybody has anything they'd like to add, now would be the time. Mr. Diaz.
Brian just reminded me when he mentioned ACYI, I know that you met with Becky Hoffman. Officially, as of two weeks ago, I now serve on the Adams County Youth Initiative Board, like on the actual board of directors, so I'm not sure if Becky Hoffman did mention that. So, you and I will get to work together on that, and, so I just wanted to mention that to you guys as well, since I know we're a big part of that.
Okay. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, just want to say that I did attend with Roger Chinklinberg at the Spring Out the Homeless Event, and that was well-attended. I'm glad that city approved a table to go. Other cities were there, North Glen, Thornton, Brighton, and it's great that Commerce City has participated. Saturday night, a lot of us attended the Boys and Girls Club Annual Gala. That was a great, great event as well. And Saturday morning, I attended Mayor Hogan's funeral, and so sad to see him go the way he did. I just was at a recent meeting back in February, and Steve said he, he felt like he had a flu, and it just went on from there. So, I want to appreciate all the years dedicated to his service, serving along with him at E-470. He actually helped pass the extra amount I was asking for. He was the one who, I'd say, catalyst to get everybody convinced him on our future policy, and policy was drafted based on the needs of Commerce City, and he was engineered on that. So, our condolences to Steve Hogan's family. Thanks.
I'm glad you brought that up. You know, I don't know if most people realize, Steve Hogan also served in the State House, and served years ago on the city council of Aurora. So, he has been in the business of governing and helping Aurora for many, many years. And he will truly be missed. He was a great leader, and I got a, a chance to work with him a lot on Metro Mayor's Caucus, as well as me and Rick got to serve with him on the ACC for several years now. And things are already changing, the dynamics with his loss and new representation from Aurora. So, he will be missed. There's nothing further to come before the city council this evening. We are adjourned.